Good evening, everybody. And we're live. I would like to call the Monday, December 14th, public hearing, 6:30 PM, to order. In accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker's March 10, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A and 20. The Quincy City Council will be convening these public hearings via remote conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access, sorry, Quincy Access QATV. Thank you. Channel QATV 9, Government Access. This is the 6:30 PM public hearing for council order, 2020 171 Utility Grant Location, Mass Electric/Verizon, 152 Oxon Bridge Road. At this point, I would like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to use the raise hand feature when you are called upon, please state your name and address. And there we go. So what do we have? Going once, going twice. All right, sold. We did have one written correspondence received to the clerk of the committees for this item. Dave Solzatz of 20 Willow Street. And this communication has been shared with the council and will be made part of the record. So there isn't any more. I don't see anybody standing. There's nobody raising their hand. So with that, seeing naught further public comment. Hello? Hello? Anything?
There's one Faye Strugler.
Sorry?
There's one person wishing to speak.
Yes, and who has control of the meeting? Is it me? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead and unmute her if you want to call in here.
Hi, I have more of a... My name is Faye Strugler. I live on 94 Elmer Ave in Quincy. And I went to look at the tree today, this afternoon. And it's more a question than anything else. It seems that we have a lot of dead trees in Quincy. And I'm just wondering, is, you know, was this tree, does this tree have a history that you know about and we don't? I mean, was it damaged? You know, I'm just wondering if the trees are taken care of when they're damaged, if they're able to be taken care of. I had a tree in front of my house that someone had parked in front of and their gas tank blew up and the tree was singed. And then part of the tree fell over during the 2018 storms that fell on my fence. And it ended up being removed. Now, that tree was at least 200 years old, if not more. And I'm just wondering if someone had taken care of it when it was singed to begin with, you know, if that tree would still be alive. So I'm wondering about this one as well. Is it documented what happened to this tree before it ended up, you know, dying?
Excuse me, councillor, if I may. I did hear from Assistant City Clerk Joe Newton. He spoke with the tree warden, Chris Haywood. The tree is dead. The guy wire needs to be removed from the tree so that the tree can be taken down. And I would just suggest that if you do have any problems with any trees in your neighborhood, that you can speak with Chris Haywood. He is always available. If anyone has any questions or concerns about the trees in their neighborhood, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for your assistance with that. And thank you for the question that was brought forth by Faye. Faye, obviously, that is a concern because, you know, moving forward, there's a lot of tree issues that we are dealing with, especially with some of the storms we have just recently taken place. But as far as this is concerned, I believe that it has been checked out. And at this point, I would just say that that's about as much information that we have. The tree warden is very vigilant, I know, because I call upon him all the time, especially in some of the areas in my ward. And unfortunately, you know, we need to be... And this is, I shouldn't even be voicing my opinion, but we should be vigilant with replacing trees, which I think the city is doing a pretty good job doing. And unfortunately, in this case, the tree, I, you know, I'm not going to voice my opinion, but thank you for yours, Faye. And go ahead, Faye, go ahead.
Are you going to plant another tree? Because you're putting up an electrical pole here, correct?
Well, I'm not doing... I wish I was in the business and would be able to do that and make some real money. But no, unfortunately, I don't have an answer to that question. I don't know if we have anybody on. Do we have anybody on from that department? Or would anybody from the administrative administration like to reach out and speak to that? Which we... Okay. But Faye, again, your concerns, again, have been heard about the tree that's coming down. And I do know that the city, you know, has things in place as far as, you know, assuring that we have trees being... And I see it throughout my ward, that's what's taking place as far as replacement of trees, new trees when streets are being done over. Again, unfortunately, this situation is a little different from some of the situations that we do have going on. And, you know, you can email me and I'd be glad to get back to you.
Mr. Chairman? Point of information, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Point of order, Chuck Phelan, Ward 5 Councillor. They are planting 350 trees. I know they're going around doing them now. I will check to see if they're going to replace the one on Oxon Bridge. So I'll look into that. I'll take that on, or it is Ward 5. But I know they are in the process of planting 350 trees. So that's being done by the Parks Department at this point.
Councillor Phelan, as always, thank you for jumping in and kind of helping you with this, and that's awesome. And, you know, that's great news, because, you know, that's great news what's going on. Faye, how do you feel about that?
Oh, well, yeah, that's good news. I just wish that we had, that we knew more about what happens to these trees when they get injured, if they're, you know, treated, if they can be treated. Just because of the tree that was in front of my house. And then there was a tree around the corner from me, an ash tree that was dead for 10 years. So I just, because I had somebody come up and look at it. I just, you know, wish we knew more about, you know, about trees that get injured and that can be rehabilitated so that we don't have to, you know, cut down their branches, you know.
Absolutely.
Just in general, we can do that, the city.
Absolutely, and that's, and I think I could... I'm not going to speak for my other ward councillors. Trees are one of the major issues that we deal with. And in fact, I was dealing with the situation today as well about trees that either needed to come down because they're dead or trees that shouldn't come down and/or be replaced. And I really want to thank you for, you know, coming on and speaking up. And I think I can speak for the other... I'm not going to speak for the other councillors, but I know, I'm trying. And as Councillor Phelan just mentioned, 350 trees are being replaced. And we really need that moving forward in this time. So I really appreciate you coming on to this public hearing. Usually, they fly through and I don't have to speak. But, and they go through, and it's great. And if I can move on, I see that there's a Julie Malaz... I don't want to mess the name up too much because it's Malazoli. Raise your hand.
Yes, thank you, Julie. My video, I can't seem to unmute the video. But I really, I live on Oxon Bridge in Ellington. And so I went out and looked at the site and question. And I really do appreciate all the trees that are being planted. And I've noticed them, it's really, really great. I just have two questions. One is kind of related to what Faye was just talking about. You know, are the trees being maintained for their own health beyond just being trimmed for the utilities purposes to go around the wires? Because that often, you know, achieves that goal, but seems to destroy the shape of the tree and its possible health. And then my other question is kind of more important, really, is there, are there policies in place to generally replace trees when that tree has to be removed? Is there a general policy to always replace a tree when one is lost so that the total number of trees stays the same? Because it does seem like if a resident or someone has to request a tree, street tree to be planted, in order for one to be planted, then we're going to just keep on having fewer and fewer trees.
Julie, if somebody from the administration wants to jump in, but I do know, I do know that your question is the same, one of the same questions. Again, I think some of the ward councillors have asked, especially when our constituents say, "We lost a tree and we're looking for a replacement." And I do know that, I do know that we had a windstorm, we had a storm a few weeks, about a week or so ago, with, in my ward, where some of the new trees that were planted, folks were diligent to come out and fix the trees that are being replaced. And I don't know if that helps the answer or know that... I believe that the city is trying very hard to replace the trees that are being taken down, unfortunately. And especially, you know, there's not, when I, like, for instance, just, I'm just going to mention my street. My street had trees all the way down the side, all the way down. And we lost a whole bunch about 12 years ago. And now these new trees are starting to be replaced. And it's starting to be a nicer street. And that's what we need to do throughout the whole city. And I will support that 100%. And I think, as Councillor Phelan, I'm going to mention them again, mention the 350 trees. That is a very good number. And I think that we should, moving forward, once we get into, get past what we're going through right now, I think, once we get past that, I think the concentration, for instance, the council has taken all more, in the last council meeting, more green space, and that's what we're trying to do. Trees, green space, I think it's all good. And if, I don't know if I've answered your question or given you a satisfied answer, but I hope so, Julie. Julie, does that kind of help at all, what I said? Is Julie still on?
Here.
No.
Sorry, thanks. Yeah, that's great to hear. I think I'm just interested in that idea of whether there's a general policy. And maybe that's a question going forward, but to just, you know, not about individual batches of trees, but about the idea of replacing any tree that must be taken down with one on that site or a nearby site. Something to consider, anyway.
Julie, if I remember, if I remember right, with one before I was on the council, many, many years before on the council, just in front of my house, a tree coming down. I think there's a timeframe where you kind of have to wait before you can actually replace the tree when it comes to roots. But I don't know. Do we have somebody on from the city, from the Parks Department, with this question? By any chance, I don't think we do. But I remember that, you know, before you can even be considered for a new tree in front of your house, or if you had to have one taken down, it took some time before roots had to be cleared. And by no way am I an arborist. In fact, I couldn't grow a flower, let alone grass. But all I can say is that, I remember that happening in front of my house. But I think we're prepared, and I apologize, for the public hearing, for this question, as far as the trees are concerned. And for yourself and the participant before me, before you, great questions that we really should be ready when we have a public hearing. And I apologize if my answer or the answers that we can give don't satisfy what you're looking for. Because, you know, they were great questions. And again, as ward councillors, we deal with trees and problems with trees on a constant basis, especially during the spring and the fall when we have, in the winter when we have rough weather, trees that need to be either taken down or not in this case because of what took place in order to have to have it removed. So I wish I had the answer, had the answer, but I don't have that answer. And I certainly will get back to you if I could.
Thank you.
No, no, thank you, Julie. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else raising their hand? I don't see it. Anybody else want to speak to that? Okay, wow. Usually, my public hearings run fast, but, you know, those are great questions and we really have to really dig deeper into it. And I want to thank my colleague, Councillor Phelan, for jumping in and helping me. And one second. I can't see... I'm sorry, I can't see one of the things. But I think that we are with that. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor or against this particular ordinance? Not ordinance, respondents of, okay, it's of the utility grant location of Mass Electric Verizon at 152 Oxon Bridge Road. Would anybody else like to speak to it? Again, wow, this is long. And thank you for all who participated. This will end, this will end the public hearing. And the time is 6:49, sorry. Thank you, folks, and thank you, everybody who participated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So with that, we're going to go ahead and open up our regularly scheduled council meeting for Monday, December 14th. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councillor King.
Present.
Councillor Crowe.
Present.
Councillor Dubonah.
Present.
Councillor Harris.
Present.
Commuted. Councillor McCarthy.
Present.
Councillor Palmucci.
Present.
Councillor Phelan.
Present.
President Liang.
Present.
Nine members, you have a quorum.
Thank you. If we could all just mute our microphones and take a moment of silence in honoring, respect of all of the women and men serving both here and abroad, as well as keeping in mind all of the first responders who are still on the front lines fighting this pandemic. Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you read the open meeting law, please? Well, Madam Clerk commuted.
Thank you. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions that being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and deemed to acknowledge, impermissible.
Thank you. And in accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker's March 10, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Quincy City Council is holding this council meeting via remote radio conferencing services and is being aired on Quincy Access Television, QATV, Channel 9, QATV 9, Government Access. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda, please.
Honoring of the COVID-19 heroes, Quincy Access Television.
Thank you. Councillor Mahoney?
Thank you, Madam President. So in reference to the weeks as we've been going on talking about the COVID heroes, I just wanted to mention Quincy Access Television because without Quincy Access Television and without our council president, we wouldn't be having our virtual meetings. Through the coordination of the council president and QATV, we've been able to hold our business so that public can see what's happening in the city council. But more importantly, QATV has also kept people apprised of what's going on with the pandemic by making sure that they replay both the governor's addresses as well as the mayor's addresses to let them know currently what's going on in Quincy, keeping people apprised as to what's going, keeping them up to date with COVID-19. And it's a valued asset to our community. And I am very happy to support QATV and to have them here tonight and thank them for all they do. Because sometimes, as we know, the work that people do will go unnoticed unless we actually notice them. So I just wanted to thank QATV.
Thank you so much, Councillor. And I do know that Mark and Jonathan are both on here, so I just want to give them a moment to say a few words before we open up to our colleagues, who I'm sure would like to say something as well. So Jonathan or Mark, feel free to jump in.
Madam President, thank you very much. And Councillor Mahoney, thank you as well. We appreciate being recognized here today. I want to give credit to all the staff at Quincy Access TV. As you mentioned, Mark, who's our Government Access Coordinator, attends all the meetings and gets them on the channel for us, including the License Board, Zoning Board, and all the other different things Mark does. And the other staff members, Chris Potter, Carol Femen, Joe Catalano, Bill Early, Michael Jarvie, Salo Schuman, Mandy Flaherty, and Ryan McWade have all done a lot of work during the pandemic. When the pandemic first hit, we took QATV Channel 9 and we put a 24/7 channel dedicated to news, information, updates from the city, from the state, and federal officials about everything coronavirus, to make sure we could get the word out there. And as Councillor Mahoney mentioned, we have the mayor's updates, the governor's updates, different press conferences, anything we can do to try to keep everything, everyone up to date and well informed. Joe Catalano has done over 150 interviews since the middle of March on coronavirus and other different things going on here in the city to keep people informed. So he's been doing Yomn's amount of work. So we appreciate Joe and everything he's done. Some of the things we've done during the pandemic, we started streaming all the different meetings, including city council, license board, zoning board. We also decided to stream the school committee meetings to help them out and get all that word out there to the citizens of Quincy and all the back-to-school forums that were held as well. We launched a brand-new website, qatv.org, was revamped to get that live streaming out there and to have video on demand more accessible and easy to find on our website. We've worked with the Quincy Council on Aging to create a block of programming for seniors and just try to mirror the events that would be happening at Kennedy Center. So if yoga was taking place Mondays at 9:00 AM, they can tune into QATV Channel 9 for the yoga or exercise and different entertainment programs as well. We worked with the Tomlinson Library to help promote their events and all the different things they have going on and the services being offered. We've also aired a lot of their programs that they've aired on Zoom. And we've put them back on to QATV Channel 9 and Channel 8 as well to keep this everyone up to form. We've worked with a number of different nonprofit agencies to help get their word out there and continue to let people know the services that are being offered. We've also worked with Quincy Asia Resources to help the lunar, excuse me, the August Moon Festival and brought it into a virtual format this year. We've also helped Manay Community Health Center interface services with fundraisers they had to promote those fundraisers. We've worked with the high schools to do the high school sports and also the student senior games that were held in July to get those games on the air. We partnered with East Nazarene College for an audiovisual program. It was a Sherlock Holmes audio drama that we did. And we've continued our mission to help the citizens of Quincy produce their own programming. So by classes that we're offering online and through Zoom, equipment that we're still loaning out to members to get their messages out there. So whether it's a talk show, a cooking show, or whatever they would like to do, that's our mission at QATV is to help them get that out there. So I just want to, again, thank you, everyone on the council. And Madam President, we appreciate you honoring us here tonight and bringing us forward, so thank you.
Of course, thank you. And I think Mark is actually streaming this meeting live, so I don't know if he'll be able to jump in. But I know he's been a huge help with making sure that these meetings get recorded, they get broadcast live, they get put up on the website, they get posted with closed captioning. And so I'm just really thankful to all of you for all that you've done as well. And I'm appreciative that Councillor Mahoney took this opportunity to identify this opportunity to honor you and bring you guys in front of us. It's not a small feat to keep everybody in the city connected to local government during this pandemic. And so again, with that, I just want to open up to my colleagues. If anybody would like to say a few words, I'm just going to take a peek around and see if anybody would like to speak. Councillor Dubonah, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank Jonathan and Mark that are on tonight from QATV. Thank you for all your hard work that you've been doing through this pandemic. You guys have really stepped up to the plate. Betty Campbell has left a good crew and you guys are still there, the core group. Just want to say thank you for all your hard work because another thing you guys have been doing this year, which is really cool, is you've been uploading it on YouTube. And you could be at your desk, working all day long, and all of a sudden, it'll get uploaded. And next thing you know, you can watch it on your own time and not on, you know, a television schedule, where you can actually just look at your YouTube or live, you know, live streaming, sometimes you have that actually recorded for later on use. So it's been really helpful for people that, you know, that need to get up to date with more COVID stuff. So just want to thank you guys for everything. And we're looking forward to 2021 and we can get past this. So thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councillor. Does anybody else want to speak before we move on? Can you just take another quick look? No? Great. Councillor Mahoney, thank you so much again for allowing us this opportunity to honor QATV. Jonathan and Mark, thank you. Please extend our thanks to all of the team members and the volunteers over at QATV for keeping us all connected. I really appreciate it and hope you enjoy your holidays.
Thank you, too. We appreciate the work.
Have a good night.
Thank you, too.
Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number one, presentation for municipal broadband network.
Thank you. Before we get started on that, I do want to recognize my colleague who has been a leader on this effort. And I think I can confidently speak for everybody across the city that we're so, so excited for this. Councillor King?
Thanks, Madam President. This is exciting. This has been a labor of love over the past almost three years now. So when we first brought this concept to the city council, it was February, March of 2018. So now we're almost three years into this project. At the time, just to give a little historical context, you know, we had heard from many folks in the city who were not thoroughly satisfied with their internet service providers and the fact that we only have one option for cable and internet service here in the city of Quincy, which, you know, the monopoly that that company does have allows for fees to be as high as they want and service to be as, you know, they're going to give it. It doesn't need to be the best because there's no competition. So thankfully, with the support of the mayor and his administration, Chris Walker and I have been working very closely on this project together. And I very much appreciate his championship and work involved in this project. We hired a consultant called Entry Point Networks. And Jeff Christensen, the CEO of that company, has joined us today. And so we are here to present to you a summary of findings from what we're calling a broadband master plan. So the broadband master... So the broadband master plan is a living document that you all have in your possession. It's available publicly, and it will serve as a sort of basis for an analysis for feasibility for this project going forward. You know, there are many reasons that we look to this project for its potential benefits, and, you know, some of those include economic development. Obviously, we're moving forward as a city with real estate development and having a reliable and, I guess, more proper broadband network to support businesses and residents in the city is very attractive for economic development, also providing access to those that might not currently have access to quality or, you know, less costly internet. Now that everybody is working from home, or at least most people are working from home, there are a lot of students who are being educated from home. It has never been more necessary to have reliable and affordable internet for residents of the city of Quincy and for people in there every day. We've just heard recently about that company that I'm not going to mention by name, who has a stranglehold on us and the city right now. They are now increasing fees, and they're instituting data caps, which will increase the cost of internet and cable provider for the city. So this is a very timely project. You know, we're at the point, as I said, this is feasibility. So this is kind of the beginning of the extension of the public process so that we can get people engaged, and we can move forward to the point of throwing an RFP out there so that we can have some bids for potential build. And Jeff will go into more details on that. So without further ado, with your blessing, Madam President, I'd like to introduce Jeff Christensen. Also want to recognize Devin Cox, who is also with Entry Point Networks who's on the call. So thank you, gentlemen, for being here today.
Great. Thank you, Council Kane. And Madam President, I appreciate it. Give me minutes to review the work we've been doing this year. We hoped to deliver this report midsummer, but like everything else, 2020 had other plans, and there was maybe a four-month delay in the process. The report that you have in your possession is probably just under 50 pages. And what we want to take you through tonight is just some of the highlights. It's not all of the highlights, but some of the key issues and some of the data that will be important as we go forward, as we take it to the public, and ultimately, as we bring it back to city council for your input and your blessing for whatever direction we go here. Feasibility is always a function of take rate, and take rate means the number of people that participate. And so ultimately, we can't say that a project's feasible until we know how many residents of the city would sign up for a proposed network. So that's the work we will really jump into as we transition into the new year, as the city council's blessing will start to focus on community engagement and also engaging potential partners for this kind of network. So I will, let me take you through some of the... All right. Can you see Quincy Broadband Master Plan in front of you?
Yep, you're good, Jeff.
Okay. So this deck is key items. The major topics that we cover in the report are listed here. I won't go through these one by one, but you can see that it's a fairly thorough analysis of the issues that are a concern as we look at a project of this magnitude. And the reports, I think we do a fairly extensive job in walking through each of these issues. One of the main sections is market analysis, and the pricing we have here is the pricing that Comcast, who is the dominant cable company, the cable company in Quincy, this is the pricing they put out on their website. They've got introductory pricing, which typically will last for 12 months, can sometimes be in a two-year contract. Verizon also has a presence in the city, but Verizon focuses heavily on their cellular network and, over time, less so in their wire to the home or wire to the small business. So you can see here, we've got standard pricing, and then we've also got data caps listed to the right. Data caps become problematic as you move up north of two to three members of a household. If those household members are streaming, watching sports, watching movies on a consistent basis, then the data caps can come into play. And then we've also got listed here the standard pricing for Comcast business. I'll note that first-line item under the table mentions that taxes and fees often represent an additional 20% to 30% of standard pricing. And so what gets marketed and presented to subscribers or potential subscribers is not a reflection of the total bill that they all end up paying because of these taxes and fees. And then, as Council Kane mentioned, there's been announcements just around Thanksgiving time that Comcast was raising prices and deploying data caps to locations that they hadn't previously deployed them, near England being one of those regions. So with this market analysis, what we've done here is we've broken it down on a per-megabit-per-second cost. So this is really a ratio of price and speed or bandwidth. And it's an interesting way to look at what people are paying for their connectivity. I think it's a useful way. You can see on the Verizon, part of the reason that Comcast has such a dominant position in Quincy is on a cost-per-megabit. Verizon's at $21, where Comcast Xfinity's ranging between $18 and $2.64 on the residential. And then over on the right, we'll take you through a little more detail on where we're modeling the numbers, but I want to focus on what's listed here as a worst-case scenario. Probably more modestly, you should say, an upper end of where we think the pricing will land. So if it comes, if the total cost to a residential subscriber comes in at $55 for a symmetrical, that means 1,000 up, 1,000 down, we're modeling that per-megabit-per-second at just over a nickel per megabit. And we'll go into that data a little more. So any question on this summary?
Jeff, what I think I can do is, if you want to finish the presentation, I can open it up to questions from my colleagues afterwards, and that way we can bring the screen share down and make sure that we catch everyone that has questions.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's one thing I think worth saying. Go back, if you would, to slide back to the business Comcast. The interesting thing I want to point out here is you'll notice where they've got, say, 100 or 200 megabit plans and 300 megabit plans for business. And then if you decide to sign up for two years, it's $80, you know, but if you decide to sign up for three years, the first 24 months is $70, which on the surface seems to be a really, really good idea. But what they don't tell you is on that third year, you actually pay $100. So it actually equalizes everything out, where you're going to pay $80 a month regardless for that plan. The same playing 90 or 140 or, you know. So I just wanted to point that out, that a lot of times, these promotional prices are just, I don't want to say they're disingenuous, but they certainly don't save the business owner any money. Because in the long run, they're paying the same amount, whether they do two years or three years. So I just wanted to point that out. And that's very, very common. We see that time and time again in various markets across the country.
So that's Devin Cox. He's also with Entry Point. Next, Devin. All right. So as Council Kane mentioned, and as the data kind of bears out, it's a near monopoly position in Quincy. We tend to, in any market, we tend to get a telephone company, which would be Verizon in this case, and a cable company. And so, you know, as we think about what problem would the city of Quincy be trying to solve to take on a project of this size, and the problem of monopoly position by an important service provider is certainly one of the important problems that we would be focused on. This next little graphic is not meant to, it's not meant to be targeted at Comcast. It's really representative of the nation as a whole, where we've got six to seven large corporations who control most of the US market. And so it's really, this is more of a graphic to illustrate the US market as a whole. And the way we describe it is that customers are paying for a luxury automobile, but they're getting a subcompact. And, you know, we're not just pulling that out of the air. We do think people are paying premium pricing. And much of this infrastructure that's in the ground is really old infrastructure. And, you know, I don't think I would be out of place to say it's 30 to 40 years old for much of the either DSL infrastructure or cable infrastructure. It's quite old at this point. So paying a lot and not getting the level of reliability and speed that we now need. So there's a lot of text on here. I think you'll all have access to this presentation. These guiding principles are important, as we worked with Chris Walker and Council Kane on what are the strategic priorities and what would the objectives be for the city. First, nobody will be forced to participate. So subscriptions on a voluntary basis. People can opt in if it suits their needs and their budgets. Second, taxes will not be increased to fund the network. That's important. So this isn't a scenario where everybody's going to be forced to pay through a tax, an indirect cost or a direct one. The ongoing operation of the network will be self-sustaining and not dependent on an ongoing subsidy from the city. So the business model put together will have to be self-sustaining, and those who participate will have to, month after month, carry the cost of the operation. Four, the city may contribute a nominal amount to get the network started, but only if the amount can be paid back to the city over a short period of time. And that is yet to be worked out. So the way to think about that is, is sort of construction financing over a short window that then would get rolled up into long-term financing as the networks, as long-term financing to put in place. Primary goals for this project, and I think as a city council, you're familiar with these goals. We've talked in the past. One, lower the cost of internet access for residents and businesses. And I think on this bullet, we want to sort of under-promise and over-deliver, but we think we can be successful in achieving that objective. Two, significantly increase the speed and reliability of network access, one, by putting in a fiber optic network that has immense capacity and also is symmetrical. And what that means is the download and upload speed are both the same. So as we're working from home, the upload speed is important for Zoom. It's important for a lot of business kinds of activities, sharing content. That all requires upload, and it's often the upload speed that struggles with some of this old infrastructure. Increase competition, giving residents and businesses multiple options for internet service providers. Build a state-of-the-art network that will improve economic development, foster innovation in the city. And then last, leverage the network to improve services provided in the city, including public safety, transportation, healthcare, et cetera. So that's really the framing for strategy and priorities. As Council Kane said, this is a living document. So if you feel like there are priorities not captured here, this isn't a full listing, but as you look at the document, the broader plan, we're certainly open to feedback. One of the items that shows up in the report, high in the list of priorities, that's not listed here, is digital divide, that we will, through this effort, be able to address any residents of Quincy that either don't have access or can't afford access. So that is listed as a strategic priority. All right. So one important idea is, you know, it's obviously important, how would you finance a project like this? We want people to think about the money that's already being allocated to this service today. So we're modeling to roughly 32,000 premises in the city. This average monthly internet cost is not a national average. This came off of the survey that we did. So we asked for respondents, and I will say on the survey that we got the highest response by far of all the cities we worked with. We got over 10,000 responses to the survey. A big part of that was because we sent it out with the city census, and that turned out to be very effective in driving up the response rate. So this $94 number came back in the survey data, and, you know, the national average is actually closer to 70. And we could plug that number in, and you'd still see that the annual internet spend is a very big number. So as a city, assuming that all 32,000 of those homes or businesses are connected, a lot of money is being spent today. And then when you look at it on a 20-year span, which is not an unusual, as you know, not an unusual timeframe for an infrastructure project, we're at 3/4 of a billion dollars for this connectivity. So the question becomes not, how do we come up with new debt? It's really a matter of how do we alter the flow of money to drive up the value that subscribers are getting from the network. So these two tables, this is, when you look at the report, you'll see these in there. Apologize for the small font. So one model is looking at if the network is 50% buried and 50% aerial, what would the infrastructure cost be if it were financed over a 20-year basis? And then the other side is if it's 100% aerial. So that means 100% on the utility poles. What would the monthly per-premise cost be just for the infrastructure? So not the service, not the maintenance and operation of the network, just to put in a really reliable fiber optic network. So this is one of the three important costs that will be borne by participants. And so you can see here that we're modeling in the $18 range and the $14 range. The financial section of the report goes into pretty good detail, and we also validated our numbers with a Massachusetts construction firm that does this work. There are some variables we don't know. One, we don't know the take rate. So this is modeling to a 60% take rate. As the take rate goes up, the overall cost per participant goes down. And so, you know, take rate could be higher, it could be lower, that could impact the cost. And then the other thing, if it's 100% aerial or even 50%, we don't know what the make-ready cost would be. So the make-ready has to do with what would the utility pole owners charge for getting the poles ready to add this infrastructure to the poles. And that's, there's a cost there, both in time, and then there's an actual monetary cost to put a fiber network on the poles. So these numbers are important, part of the total cost eventually borne by the subscriber. Summary of, so the financial pro forma, projected cost per premise. So this means what would it cost? I think this is modeled again to 60%. And this is on the 50% buried, 50% aerial. So we're modeling to $3,000 per premise. So we're modeling to three thousand dollars per premise. Estimated number of subscribers participating, twenty-four thousand. The total cost of the network, just over seventy-five million, if, if those assumptions are correct about take rate and the fifty percent buried and aerial. So how does that model to a subscriber cost on a monthly basis? Which is, we're all used to paying this bill on a monthly basis. Remember, in the survey response, people are saying that they're up over ninety dollars for their current connectivity. I think the upper range here, so I, the numbers came out to forty-eight, sixty-five. I'm comfortable saying that I think fifty-five dollars is sort of an, an upper limit on where I think will come. So I think we're going to come in a range. So let's, let's say that at fifty-five, given make-ready costs and maybe construction costs are a little higher than expected. So let's say it turns out to be fifty-five. That would be for a thousand by one thousand symmetrical connection that we're modeling here. So when you compare that to over ninety dollars, there's reason for optimism. So as we put these numbers out, we do want people to know, part of the work that will be done over the next six months will be to harden these numbers. So today, they are theoretical models and will work, they'll be an RFP for design and construction. And part of the purpose of the RFP is not just to select project partners, but to harden the numbers so that people who are thinking about signing up know what they would be signing up for. So that, that's important work that'll happen over the next six months. One other important thing in terms of the way we think about these networks is, when you separate the infrastructure costs from the ongoing maintenance and the services on the network, then when that infrastructure is paid off, then subscribers get the benefit of the infrastructure being paid off. We like to design the maintenance and operation fees to be sustainable over time, which means new electronics that will get replaced on a five- to seven-year basis. So we think that's an important component is to be, for residents to be able to pay off that infrastructure and then drive down the costs even lower over time. So benefits of going forward, we've really covered a lot of this. Eliminate near-monopoly broadband control, introduce competitive pricing, enable faster network speeds, increase network reliability, increase, reduce the cost for local businesses and increase the speeds, provide a local solution for the digital divide. We think actually, digital divide is only going to get solved locally. It's going to get solved because it's a local priority. Provide local control over service quality, enable essential infrastructure for economic growth and innovation. And these networks do improve property values. There's good data out there, there's, studies have been done, and this is a real variable as people think about where they're going to locate connectivity, robust connectivity matters in decision-making. So next steps. One thing that we did not put in this deck that I wanted to mention was the survey results. That is in the report you have, and it's in the middle of the report. But with those ten thousand responses we got, one thing we found was eighty-one percent of people indicated on the survey that they would be likely, or very likely, to support this network. So that's, that's a compelling response, given, especially given the high response rate we got. And similar numbers came back in terms of how important it is to have more competition, more choice, and I think it was exactly eighty-one percent again on how important reliability and network speed are. So I think our, you'll see in the survey results that so far in the process, we have strong community support for this effort. So next steps, really divided into three buckets. We've been working both with the city solicitor's office and with outside bond council, just to make sure there's a clear understanding of the legal framework under which we pursue this effort. A decision, we're still waiting for clarification from bond council on whether there's, there will be a need to establish a municipal light plant for this, for this effort. So we'll, we'll be in touch on, once we get the full clarification on that. And I think, as an addendum to the report you have, you should have the findings, both from the city solicitor's office and from bond council. The key part of the effort, we think the most important part of this project is the community engagement part. So that means using all of the education, communication tools we've got, social media. In this environment, COVID environment, we would hold web, webinars, as opposed to town hall kind of meetings. Ultimately, we think we're going to need to get out on the streets and talk to everybody. And some people may be less inclined to engage in a really public forum, but we find that if we actually get out in the neighborhoods and, and make, you know, hire college students who understand these issues, to get out and actually just talk to people face-to-face, that's really effective in terms of education and answering concerns people have. And then the last part is the design-build modeling. That means an RFP for engineering, construction, creating a project plan, getting formal design for the network, doing the make-ready, and eventually constructing the network. So an important thing to say, I started out by saying feasibility is a function of getting people to sign up. The way we are talking about this is that we would not go forward, and we wouldn't even bring it to city council and to the mayor unless we, we have the level of community support that would make the network successful. So that's, you know, the community engagement piece is critical, make sure that the demand is there so the city council and mayor can feel comfortable proceeding with a project of this size. So I think that, that's everything we had, so I'll close that and come back for questions.
Great. Thank you so much. So I'm going to go ahead and open it up to my colleagues for any questions that they might have, Councilor Harris and then Councilor Pemuchy.
Thank you, thank you, President, President Liang. And thank you to, of course, Councilor Kane and the mayor. This was, this is something that, and one of the last things that was just mentioned is looking for the support of, of the community and, and the people. I gotta tell you something, of, especially during these times where folks are at home, they're working from home, they have an issue, we have issues that you would not believe out in ward six, as far as, I'm not even going to try to pretend that I know what I'm talking about as far as connectivity or connection, the connections. But all I can say is that I believe that, that you, you, it'll be overwhelmingly supported. And again, thank you for, for my colleague, the mayor, and the folks with the presentation that just was, was presented. I, I will support, and, and all I can say is, you know, the sooner, the better, the faster would be, would be great because I know it will have this, it will have a lot of support from my constituents. So thank you again.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Pemuchy and then Councilor Mahoney.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, Jeff, Devon. Thank you for that presentation. I, I just had a couple of questions in listening. You, I think you had started off, and maybe I misunderstood, but you're saying you're using sixty percent subscriber rate as a conservative amount, saying like, we would have to get to sixty in order to do it?
No, no, didn't mean, sorry.
Okay. Because I was going to say, because that's a liberal, that's more of a liberal approach because the more you get to buy in, the lower the cost is. So the other, it would, it would be the opposite, like, look at like a forty percent rate. That would be like the, the kind of like doom room, or like a, a more conservative approach. Is that right?
Hopefully we didn't misspoke, misspeak. But yes, forty percent, you start to get down to where it's not viable at around forty. Forty's the lower end of what we look for. We feel like if we drive enough value, both in terms of price and quality, that sixty percent is achievable. But sixty percent would be aggressive if the value's not there.
Right.
We'll drive the value, both in cost and speed, to get that kind of take rate.
And how many other communities have you guys helped do this?
So right now, so there's, there are various stages. So the first project that we did was a, a small community called Ammon, Idaho, and about a hundred articles have been written about Ammon. Our approach is different than everybody else out there, and, and that is because we've focused heavily on the use of technology to drive competition. So the, the kind of networks that we build, subscribers can switch their ISP on demand. So that means the ISPs are basically software. We turn them into software companies, and if you don't like your ISP, then you just go onto your computer and unsubscribe and subscribe to a new one. And so
Kind of like porting, porting your phone number with the click of a button on your phone?
Yeah. The way to think about it is, if we had all the, all the ISPs involved in the Quincy network, they would be co-located in downtown Boston. And what we've done, so they would all be plugged into what we call the provider edge. So they're plugged into a switch, and we've designed software that, where if you, the subscriber says, I don't want this ISP anymore, the software shuts down the port that connects you to that ISP. And then when you subscribe to a new one, it opens up a new port that, and so what that does is it gives you, the consumer, much more control, but it also drives real competition because if people can switch their ISP on demand, the ISP has to have their game on, in both price and in terms of what they're offering. So what we model, these numbers would look low to most, particularly for the ISP cost. But the reason they're low is we've actually achieved it in the other, in other networks by creating this kind of competition.
So that's really your competitive edges, that, that, the, the technology you use to quickly switch ISP?
Yeah, it goes beyond that. We, we didn't get into that tonight. The technology also will
I barely understood what you just said, so please don't go any deeper. I'm trying to hold it together and look like I'm an intelligent guy. It's, it's hard to do.
Yeah. So we're using technology to drive benefits to the consumers.
That's interesting. Okay. I, I, it comes to mind, like, it makes me think of like quitting the gym. Like, one of the reasons people keep their memberships is it's so hard to quit the gym, right? Like, right? So if, so if you make it super easy to quit the gym, then you're increasing competition among the gyms, and the gyms therefore have to provide better service. It's the opposite of what happens in a monopoly. You end up paying for a luxury car and getting a UGO.
Yeah. Exactly.
So
The second part of your, second part of your question was, how many of these have we built?
Yeah.
I'll let you have to address that. I want to make sure we didn't forget that.
Oh, I will.
Yeah. So we, the first network we deployed is in Idaho. There are four other networks under construction in this model right now, two in Idaho, one in Indiana, one in California. And then we are, we're doing this level of planning with three cities in Massachusetts, one in Connecticut, and then we're working with cities in California, Wisconsin, Utah, Idaho, and Arizona. So we are early in terms of our particular kind of model, our, our use of technology to sort of change the way this all works. But the technology in Idaho's been working for four years. So it's been out there, and we've been able to hammer on it while we get other cities to start to migrate to this kind of model.
So can you walk us through a little bit about what your experience has been in other communities that have adopted this? Whether it's just Idaho at this point, or the, the couple that you mentioned? What you get in terms of subscriber rates that you've seen? And how that, and how that changes, right? Because I mean, there's a difference between subscriber rate after eighteen months and subscriber rates in, you know, as you're gearing up.
Yeah.
One, we don't do it, the other one.
Yeah. Yeah. So the subscriber rates have been between sixty and seventy percent, and, but they go up over time, and we don't, the way we do this, you don't get people leaving the network. This is an important part of the city. Our recommendation is that the city treat this as an improvement to the property. So when, when people sign up, we want them to be committed to the infrastructure. We want them to say, this is an improvement to my property. I will commit to being loyal to the network. And, you know, ultimately, the city council and the mayor will decide exactly what business model. But this is what we've deployed in other places where they, you know, we're going to give you a lot of value, and in return, we want you to take the risk away from the city. We want you to assume the risk for your property because we're giving you so much value.
Very similar to a utility connection fee.
Right. Got it. Got it. Okay. Okay. And the sixty to seventy percent subscriber rates that you're seeing, how long does it take you, how long have you seen it, does it take you to achieve that? Either with your model specifically or in the industry in general going to a municipal?
Well, we do the demand aggregation upfront, so we will go out and actually not start construction until we have a visible number.
Right.
And then they will gradually climb over time. But when we, when we launched our first project, they started out, they started out, they've, they've hovered above sixty-three percent all the time.
Is that, is that industry-wide in terms of municipal broadband?
No, there's a, there's a big variety. So, you know, too many cities have just copied what the incumbents do. And if you're going to copy a corporation that's got billions of dollars of revenue, hundreds of billions, you better really, you've got to do something different. We can't just go ahead and copy their model, which means one ISP, same cost structure. To, to us, that's a recipe for bad results. So we've always felt like we've got to do something that's really driving value for the consumer. And a big part of that is giving them control. So if they don't like what they're getting, they have the ability to switch and do it on demand. They don't have to call anybody, they don't have to have a truck to their house, they get on their computer and they switch.
Right. You, you lose them as quickly as you get them if you can't, if you can't deliver on what you promised.
And another important part of that is if there's an outage, you don't have to call anybody. You just go to your portal. It could be, the, the system will tell you if it's a physical problem, so if a back bump hits the fiber, you're not going to be able to switch. But if your ISP is down, if something's gone wrong with the ISP, then people will be able to switch.
Interesting. Let me just, one quick comment on part of your presentation about improving property values. We just set the tax rate last, last week. I don't think improving property values is the best-selling point to make for people. Unless you're selling your house, you don't want your property value to go up because you're going to pay more taxes. But I get what you're saying.
Good point. Yeah. Yeah. I think the point there is that as people look for homes, they're now asking, tell me about the
Right. The value add to the community. Yeah. Now, you said eight, eight that, well, I think you said, I think you said eighty percent of the folks who responded to the survey said that they would likely subscribe. And I think he said there were ten thousand respondents, so my math skills, eight thousand out of roughly twenty-four thousand people that we sent the survey to, right? So it's about thirty, thirty percent of premises?
Yeah. Yeah. So responding to a survey is obviously different than saying
Right. Right.
But, you know, we often, we tell our customers, you know, we're working with Fairhaven, just to your south. There, we were hoping to get a response rate up in the seven to eight hundred. It's a smaller count, but it becomes statistically valid between eight hundred and eleven hundred responses. So for Quincy to get ten thousand responses, I mean, it's, the statistical validity there is very strong.
Yeah, I understand that. So
By the way, the one thing I do want to point out, because in the report, you'll notice this, in the report, we're only reporting on about, just over nineteen hundred of those ten thousand responses. In the report, we're only reporting on about, just over nineteen hundred of those ten thousand responses. Because again, you get to a point where it becomes very statistically valid. And the, you know, as long as you randomly sample them, you're, you're in good shape. So I, I don't want there to be a confusion when you review the report where it says we're, we're reporting on, on nineteen, just over nineteen hundred.
That's, I appreciate that, um, that caveat. That, that makes sense though. Um, does it concern you guys at all that it, it's only thirty percent at this point are likely to subscribe? Or that's encouraging to you based on your past performance where you've achieved that level of sixty percent without that same input this early?
Yeah, we were jumping up and down. When we got the response rate we got, to us, that indicates the response, the support that's out in the community. So, you know, the response rate was way bigger than we've gotten in any other city. So we just take it as more evidence that community support here. So we, we think we can extrapolate. There is some selection bias. So we, there are some potential biases that could be in the data. Meaning people that really care about this issue are the ones that responded to the survey. So that would be biased in the data. But we believe that if we can deliver the numbers that we think we can deliver in terms of actual costs, that you'll find a really strong response in the, in the community.
And, um, the last note that I had from your presentation that I wanted to follow up on was, um, the, the poll fees. I forget what you called connectivity fees or
Poll attachment.
Poll attachment. Um, can you explain that a little bit more? So we, we would, obviously there's a cost to physically attaching stuff to a poll. You said there's also like a contractual or negotiated cost as well?
Yeah, there's a, the FCC mandates what poll owners can charge. But there is an annual fee that would become part of the maintenance and operation of the network, um, per poll. And so, so there's a cost for that, but there's also a cost to do the construction. And so, um, you've got to work with the poll owners, which I believe is National Grid and Verizon. I'm, I'm right, correct?
I believe they mostly Verizon. Is that right, Mr., Mr. Walker? Is that, they mostly Verizon? Do you not?
I think it's, I think it's a mix. I think National Grid will have some and I think Verizon will have others. So we'll, that's, that's information we'll break down in this process. But, you know, if it's an old pole, they can come back and say, you've got to replace that pole because it's not, it's not strong enough for another wire. Yeah. So you can see that that's why it's a variable we, we don't control. Um, they can slow down the process, um, sort of slow lock it. Um, and then they're, they charge fees if work has to be done. Like if you have to move other wires up or down, there, there can be fees for that.
And so the, um, the FCC fee, uh, is that a standard fee across the country? Is it?
Yeah, okay. It's regulated.
And what is, is that a literally a per pole fee?
Yeah, and it's annualized. So I want to throw out seventeen dollars, but, um, I'll do some research, research on that, confirm I'm accurate.
Yeah, but, but it's something like that, you're just in your head, it's like, so it'd be like seventeen dollars per year per pole? Interesting. You, you know, I, I find that interesting separate and apart from this conversation because of the way in which we, um, we tax poles and we have purchased poles in the past and the value that we have paid for poles that the city has taken over. But they essentially have, through the idea wasn't worth this, they have this, this, um, revenue, um, opportunity.
Yeah, we wish that every city owned all their poles. That would, that would make
Make your life easier?
Yeah.
Yeah. We own a significant number of our poles, don't we? No? Thought we bought a bunch of poles, Mr. Walker.
Madam President, we bought the lights, not necessarily the poles.
Ah, okay. All right. I thought we were getting the whole pole. All right. Good to know. Um, do you, do you, do you anticipate that there would be problems? I mean, luckily Comcast doesn't own the poles, right? I mean, that's
Yeah.
We're in a better position because it's, it's
Yeah, there's people process that can be worked through. The question becomes, we just need to make sure that we can pass, so we can model them into the price. And then we also, timeline is also important because, you know, others have mentioned if people are supportive of the network sooner rather than later and, you know, now's a great time to solve this problem. Though timeline's also an issue. If it's a buried network and if parts of it are buried, we don't have to wait for those approvals. We can design and start construction. So that's also an important part of the work over the next six months is where is a buried network possible?
And does that typically go under, um, the street or the sidewalk? Where do you bury it?
You know, it's going to be in the right of way. So Quincy, given the age of Quincy's infrastructure and just the density of the city is more complex, we're, we're working with the town out in Western Mass. And, you know, their right of way is soft shoulder and construction's pretty easy. Quincy's more complicated and more expensive. So, but we will do a full analysis on aerial versus buried. Factor in the variables we don't control like poll attachment.
And, um, you had said that, uh, this goes towards, uh, bridging the digital divide. Is that simply because the, the price point is lower and therefore more people can get it? Or do, do you, do you have programs, would we have programs in place that allow for free or reduced fees based on income?
Yeah. Um, the, the best first move towards solving digital divide is to make it more affordable. So that's, that's a really good start. Um, but then I think you'll also see from the Biden administration, this, this is going to be a priority for them. I think you're going to see them addressing with broadband bill, um, helping urban areas resolve digital divide issues and then also rural where there's a lack of density. So I think you're going to see some action there. Um, and then if you think about a scenario, many people who can't afford it live in multi-family housing. And so the densities are really good. What, so you can, because you have local control, you can start to set policy. For example, if, if four families live in a fourplex, in a normal scenario, you would charge them twenty dollars for the maintenance and operation fee of that connection. The city would be in a position for them to share because they're in a shared infrastructure building. They could then share that connection cost and then it becomes five dollars instead of twenty. So you could do the same thing with the infrastructure cost where it's one pipe coming in. So there are policy things the city would be in a position to do, to do that would solve this issue.
Well, that's, that's amazing. I mean, that's, um, that to me is very exciting. Um, you know, given the, the current climate we're in, I mean, we, we, every Quincy, you know, we gave away Chromebooks to our students in Quincy. You know, and then the logical next question is, do they all have internet, right? I mean, some of these kids didn't or don't. Um, so, uh, the ability to set some policies that address those issues and make sure that every kid, every, or could make sure that every kid, every student in Quincy, um, has internet access is, is, that is, excites me, right? That's, um, yeah, that's really funny. And boy, you guys are in the right business at the right time, huh? Yeah.
That's good. It's, these are important problems. So it's
Yeah.
It is gratifying to work on these and see, see progress.
Yeah, good for you guys. Well, keep up the great work. I mean, I, I'm, we're excited. I know folks are excited. And after the Comcast, uh, thing when it was announced, I got a slew of emails and, uh, phone calls about it. Oh, what are we going to do something? Folks are, are hungry, are hungry for this. And the folks who called me, I don't think a single one of them knew that we were exploring this. So, I mean, I think that speaks to the, um, kind of the undercurrent of subscribers that we have that we, we don't know we would, would have. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Councilor. We're going to go to Council Mahoney and then Council Falyne.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, just to pick up off of, um, I think you mentioned the Biden, Biden administration. Is that the E-rate? Is that what you're speaking about, um, in regards to? No. So that's every, would E-rate actually benefit, um, the community if we were to go ahead with broadband?
Um, E-rate has been very beneficial. It's targeted at schools and libraries. And it has been very beneficial. I think, so our experience has been that we've been able to drive down the cost uh, um, to schools
Mm-hmm.
to such a degree that it was actually less burdensome for them just to participate in the municipal network than to continue participate in the E-rate program. Because there is a regulatory sort of overhead with E-rate. But part of a B-rate, um, the Biden administration's talking about, I mean, especially with COVID, they're talking about a fairly significant broadband bill. And the people that we're connected to, um, believe the two priorities are going to be urban, digital divide, and rural digital divide. So not trying to necessarily do anything in suburbia. I think they're going to be worried about net neutrality issues, which is a different issue. But just on the accessibility, they're going to focus on urban and rural.
So one of the things I, so, and, and I appreciate this presentation because it's far more, um, um, it's, it's far more in-depth as it was when you first introduced it. Um, and I'm sorry because my daughter has to start crying. So, two of them are better. Um, but one of the things I, I was, I was wondering if you could explain, and when we talk about broadband, I know we're talking about internet connectivity, but when we also talk about Comcast, people at home might also be thinking that means they're television too. So that's some of the layers on top of the cost for the internet. Is that correct?
Yeah. So the way this has evolved is cable TV was here before the internet.
Right.
And, and telephones were here before the internet.
Do you remember those?
I do. And so the, uh, the reason the telephone companies and the cable companies became the monopoly controllers of the internet is that they had all this infrastructure in place. The internet emerged, they figured out how to deliver the internet across their infrastructure. So, but they were already positioned to take over the market, which is what they did. And the way the cable industry, there used to be thousands of cable companies. The ones that are left today went to Wall Street and said, we can buy up all of the small cable companies and turn it into one big or five big cable companies. And that's what happened. So Charter, Cox, and Comcast rolled up the industry. They got private equity money or, you know, Wall Street money and, and bought out everybody else. And today, that's what we have. So they had the infrastructure. Um, so to get to your question, will people lose their TV?
Not necessarily.
Yeah, they'll, they'll have the option to continue with Comcast. A lot of people don't know that Comcast now has over-the-top packages. And what that means is that regardless of who your internet provider is, you can subscribe across the internet for Comcast TV. So people can do it either through the traditional cable mechanism or through, across the internet. And then they've got all the other options, which is YouTube TV. You know, one of the important things about the model we're pursuing is there are no data caps. And so people will be able, they're not going to get punished for streaming on added unexpected costs.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about the audience. Sometimes it listens at home, like, um, um, my parents who are in their nineties and, um, they, they don't even, they still don't understand how we do Zoom meetings. So, um, so, so the fact is, is that they don't have smart TVs. But some people that don't have a smart, that doesn't mean that, you don't have a smart TV, doesn't mean that you can't, um, access, um, smart channels. But, um, it's just not through your TV flicker. Um, but, but I also wanted to make sure that people understood, like, you know, your Netflix, your, those would be add-ons to your broadband. It's much faster. There's benefits, there's so many benefits to, um, to a comparison. So broadband would be into your home directly from the wire, then it would be, there'd be your Wi-Fi connection in your home still, correct?
Yeah. And Wi-Fi, we, we've got a wire coming in and all Wi-Fi does is distribute it throughout your house. So leveraging that fiber optic connection coming into the house. So good clarification. I'm glad you, glad you said that about people aren't going to lose their TV.
Yeah. So I mean, it's just, it's just, uh, it's, it's always one of those things when you start talking about this. They think that they're not going to have an extra, they're going to have one bill and it's going to cover everything. And this sounds very, you know, optimistic to them, but then they find out that they have other bills that they have to pay too. So they, they were being disingenuous. So the other thing I was going to ask is, we just had QATV in Forests too. So how does, um, how does this like broadband, how would that work with your local access TV? Because right now they are supported through Comcast, which is like the, the, you know, how, how does a community like Quincy ensure that they still have access, have the ability to access TV for their constituents to be able to know about local government?
Yeah. So there's, there's two questions there. There's a, a technology question.
Yep.
Um, so how do we deliver it? So one, I talked about earlier that we leverage technology to give more value to consumers. One of the things that we do is, so you could deliver it over the top. Um, we also can create, and the technology's set up to do this, so this is not a big lift. We can create a, a private network for QATV. And so we could create this dedicated, not even going across the internet. And I don't want to confuse everybody, but
Right.
There's a difference between broadband and the internet, and it might be too technical for this discussion. But we can create a private network specifically for QATV. So anyone connecting to the network could access this private channel essentially. For QATV. So, so technologically, I think the important summary is, um, not a heavy lift to And then from a business model point of view, you know, one of the values of a local network is local control. And then city council will decide what policy is relative to, um, over time, your cable franchise fees are going down as people heading the board.
Um, well, they're going down anyway now because people, people are, you know, they're not accessing as much to Comcast because of their smart TVs and because of their ability to, um, to, to have choice, really. But, but not, but the choice isn't there for everybody if they don't have the smart TV and they don't, they don't have access. If they don't have smart, um, fast enough with connections.
Yeah. Yeah. So you'll be able to, you'll be able to solve the policy problems because city council, um, will, and the mayor will be setting policy.
And then when we talked about, you know, when we're talking about the, the, and I, I agree with you, Council Mahoney, these questions because many of them, I, I, I shared some of those questions where it came to the telephone poles. And then also, um, the burying, um, burying the wires underneath ground. Um, when we were talking about the different areas that you've been in in Idaho in those years, were most of those, um, were they mostly pole connections? Or were they, um, underground connections that you were doing?
We're getting a mix. Um, it really depends on the geography of the country. So Idaho is a totally buried network versus one we, in fact, we, we try to bury networks wherever we can.
Right.
But we were, we were on earlier today with this town in Western Mass. And their public works director wants to bury as much of the network as they can, which they think will be about eighty to ninety percent.
Is there a benefit for it being there? I mean, I would think that there'd be less, um, you know, if you have high winds or, um, problems happen, trees going down, you know, there's, is that cost, um, built into your, your projections? Because we definitely have our internet connections to the telephone poles mostly through Quincy. And I'm not sure if that's going to be something that we can put underground throughout the city, but
Yeah. So the, yeah, there, we're modeling, so let's say we end up at twenty to twenty-two dollars a month per subscriber just for maintenance, operation of the network. You do the math on, let's say it's twenty-two dollars. Thanks. Twenty-four thousand subscribers and you've got a fairly healthy budget for, you can either outsource that. So you could hire a third-party firm to maintain and operate the network. Or you could stand up a department to manage it internally. The money will be there to do that, but that, you'll have control over that as a city council.
Now is going to be my next question. So who, who's manning? So when your, when your broadband goes down because the wire goes down, who's manning it? Is that a city department or, I mean, you just answered that, that that would be up to however the policies are set as to the direction we go. And whether it's, um, you know, a separate, um, entity from the city that's doing it or if they hire somebody. Is that something your company does or is it something that you recommend or how do you?
Yeah, we're, our company is two things. We're a consulting firm and we're a, a technology software company. Um, so we don't maintain and operate networks, but there are good companies in your region that do. So you'll, you know, once we have a clear picture on initial take rate, so initial stand-ups, then we'll be able to come back to, to the city council and mayor and say, this is what the infrastructure cost looks like, the construction cost. This is what the budget would be for ongoing operation of the network. And, and, and we'll model that out so you can see how those costs will be allocated. But it's a healthy amount of money and sufficient to, um, to stand up a department. And sufficient to, um, to stand up a department if that's what you choose to do or to outsource it. And I think you'll also see, um, because of the work Counselor Kane has done, there are two surrounding cities that are watching Quincy, actively watching Quincy. And I think you will see a regional impact, um, where others, they're, they're not leading like Quincy, but they'll follow suit. So I think there will be some opportunities there if you decided you wanted for someone in terms of, etc.
And could you expand on that? What would be the benefit? I mean, I, I imagine what, you know, what the benefit would be, but, um, if, if, if other communities were to jump on or tag on with us and did become racial, does that help with our pricing? Does it help with, um, is it just?
I think the biggest benefit would be if you decided not to stand up a city department. So if you stand up a city department, it makes sense to do that autonomously. If you decide to outsource it, then you get, you got some scale for a network operator, a third-party network operator. And so that would be, um, a key benefit, just the scale that would come to bear. The other is that there are some technical benefits. The way this, these modern networks get designed is if people, if somebody worked in Milton and lived in Quincy. With these modern networks, it will be easy for them to create a private connection between their office and their home. And we won't get into how that all works, but it's, it's all done in software and it's done real-time. And so if somebody worked in a surrounding community that have the same kind of network, then you can get some technology benefits as well.
So if I, if, if Braintree was doing the same kind of Quincy was doing, and I was paying for my broadband, um, out of my home in Quincy, I could use the same broadband connection in, in Braintree, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that you could connect your office.
To my home.
And you could do it in a private network, which a lot of companies care about that. They, they would force employees to use VPNs or private connections instead of. So there are some benefits there.
I think the biggest, I think the biggest benefit is when the, of these types of networks, the more subscribers you have on, the lower cost per subscriber just automatically happens in a really meaningful way. So if you were to go from twenty-four to thirty-five to forty-five, you, everyone would benefit dramatically from a cost reduction perspective.
Yeah, at the ISP layer, yeah, good, good, um, yeah. So the, the competition increases the bigger the scale.
Okay, and this is, this is my last question because I, I'm, I'm, I'm going to assume that you're going to be back before, so again, you still have some, some, so this has, this has been very, very helpful. So one of the other things you said that it would increase, you know, something like this when people are, you know, many people when they're looking for homes want to know what the connectivity is because they might need to be able to ensure that they can connect to their offices and, um, it's a lot of problems, as Counselor Harris was saying, make the problems out in different parts of the city for this. But it's also businesses to be able to, um, attract good businesses to Quincy if we have broadband. So could you expand upon that as far as the speeding connection for businesses to be attracted? So you do have a, you know, large commercial opportunity here in Quincy as well.
Yeah, yeah, good question. So the beautiful thing about fiber optics is that you can go, so what we're proposing is the base case for speed is a thousand megabits per second up and a thousand megabits per second down. So that's, it's called symmetrical gig. Um, and that is more than a resident needs, but that's what we want to deliver. We want to give them more than they need. The nice thing about fiber optics is to increase from one gig to ten gigs. So that would be going to ten thousand megabits per second. You don't have to change, do anything with the fiber. All you're doing is changing the connectors at the ends of the fiber to allow for this faster speed. So those are called SFPs. So it's, it's relatively inexpensive and you can have, connect one business, a ten gig, another business, a forty gig, another business at a hundred gig, and another business at one gig, and they could be all next door to each other. So it's got that kind of flexibility, um, which is really compelling for a commercial.
Yeah. So I, I said that was pretty much my last question, but I, I promise Counselor, um, Madam President, this is my last question. So, so one of the problems that we have, um, what would you have with just current internet is that, um, depending on how many people are using it, it can slow down your connectivity. And, um, you know, and even if you have a business, um, yeah, I, you know, I might have a business line as opposed to my neighbor might have just the regular Comcast line, but both of them being drawn out of this same potential pole or however you want to describe it, it, they, they can be very slow. You can call up and you can get, you know, get the little things you plug into walls and try to make everything just work so much better, but ultimately, when you go to do that test and you're, and you're able to test to see how fast it's going, you're seeing that it's just a real draw on the, um, ability to be able to use your internet connection. Could you explain how your system or how a system like this would benefit, um, you know, the residents of Quincy?
Yeah. So ninety-nine percent of the networks in the United States are shared networks, which is just what you were describing. What that means is that thirty-two homes or sixty-four homes are sharing a connection. And it's, it's these splitters, and most people are not really aware that that's what's going on, that you're sharing with your neighbor, or you're sharing with thirty-one neighbors. You don't build shared networks. We build dedicated fiber networks, they're called, so that's called a passive optical network, and we build active Ethernet networks. So we build dedicated networks so your neighbors are not going to impact your reliability.
Yeah. And then on top of it, for people that do have to log into VPN systems, they have the same problem because VPNs are kind of doing the same thing, and you have a slow internet connection and it was slow VPN and you just go a slow day. So, um, I want to thank Counselor Kane for all the hard work he's been doing on this because it's an educational opportunity as well for all of us. I know that, that we're, um, that, I guess the other part, last question, I think, was the timeline, what's the timeline for this, um, for your next presentation? Just because I know it's slowing down because of the pandemic, I'm just curious.
Um, we asked Counselor Kane and Chris Walker that last week and they said, let's go. So, so our job is to get you all the information you need and get out in the community. Um, so we're going to be pushing to, to sort of turn the corner on this and, um, the things that could slow it down, if, if the city does have to build a municipal light plan, there's a timeline for that under the legal code. It, it looks like there's a way around that, meaning, um, we'll get into that once we have the data from the, from the outside council, but we're going to, we're going to push to make things happen in twenty-twenty-one. And we should have an update for you on the timeline, I would say by early March.
Well, I'll be interested to see when it comes back. Again, thank you very much, Counselor Kane, for all your hard work, and, um, and it was an interesting presentation, so, and thank you, Madam President, for indulging with the questions.
To jump, I guess it's, um, with you, a couple of questions that I have. Um, you're talking about possibly going underground in the city. I think you're going to have to take a look at having run a fiber optic network in Quincy before. Um, very difficult to get underneath the, these streets, particularly along Hancock Street. Uh, you want to see a spaghetti network of a million different lines. I've been underneath Quincy. I've been, I've been underneath Quincy Square, I've seen it. Um, so, and I think a lot of this, I mean, we were able to run our poles because we had two feet under the public safety, has two feet on all these poles. But that was even a fight, so I think that a little bit of a fight.
Yeah. Our, yeah, our point is, we will do the analysis. If you look at what we modeled, it was fifty percent aerial, fifty percent buried, and then a hundred percent aerial. If you forced me tonight to say what I think it will be, I think it'll be on the poles. But if we can put some of it underground, we're going to, we're going to do the numbers on that.
Well, I think when you go to Hancock Street, particularly Quincy Square, North Quincy, Wallaston, you're all underground. Because I know I've got to get five up to those light poles, the, the, the traffic lights to work the cameras and stuff like that. And those all have to go underground, so you'll have, it's going to happen. In those areas particularly, you have to find underground. Areas up by, uh, Adams Street, where there were, uh, street, the street lights more than brown, but that's something you'll have to look at. Uh, another, another question I have was, I think you kind of, how does this scale? I know I've had conversations with various other cable people. How does this scale when you get it? And one of the things that usually scares people about Quincy is we have a lot of multifamily homes. You know, two, four families, big apartment buildings with a hundred apartments, uh, condo units with sixty, seventy, uh, units in there. Are you able to, uh, to scale your thing when go to these, particularly some of these big buildings that we just built?
Yeah. Yeah, the simple answer is yes. So the, really the technology that we're using is the same technology that gets used in data centers. So it's, it's Ethernet switches and the, the premise device is actually a mini computer. So it's, it's a very sophisticated little device. Um, but we can, we can buy these at scale and the way the network's designed, um, we spent all of last year working on the scalability, not twenty-twenty, but twenty-nineteen, working on the scalability issues to make sure that we could go from one thousand to ten thousand to a hundred thousand. And what we essentially did is we created a one-to-one relationship from the network control center to the customer. And so we took the scalability issues out of the software. There's multiple scalability issues, um, which we could, you know, we'd be happy to do a presentation on, and it's an important thing because, you know, doing it for five hundred is very different than doing it for twenty thousand.
Yeah, and I think one of the challenges you'll find in Quincy is we have a lot of multifamilies and that's, and when you go to a condo unit, you have to speak with sixty different owners on how they're going to work out. And that's going to come into, I believe, the, uh, the community engagement plan because it's obviously getting those people, getting, you, you look up on Quarry Street, some of the major, uh, by Avalon and stuff like that, there's some very big complexes. That, I know just from what I heard, was a lot of people said that's one of the biggest challenges. And I think Quincy, we got a single-family home, but we also got a mixture of multifamily apartments that would come into its home.
Now, the, the upside of multifamily is it's going to drive down the total cost for all subscribers, because when you get that kind of density, then the effect is it makes it more affordable for everybody. So that's the upside. Probably the hardest part of that is when you're dealing with old infrastructure, how do you get fiber optics to every unit in the building? And so I think it's the internal work that, um, is a, can be a bigger challenge.
I mean, I was, I'm old enough to where I was here when, when content until cable came in, ran the infrastructure that's there now. And now, like you said, that was more than thirty years ago, and thirty years is like a forever in the IT business. So I received a lot of calls on this, I'm excited to see it moving forward, I look forward to your next presentation. Thank Counselor Kane for bringing this in, this is a great, I think we're, we're looking for, uh, we need to look for, um, you know, you know, one provider, because never a great way to do it.
No.
New competition. So I'm excited to see what's going on. I know in the city, schools have their own ISP, it goes through the city IT network and all the city buildings are connected, but that's on a much smaller scale than what we're talking about in, in what we've had in the city. So, uh, I look forward to it, I think the constituent, my constituents definitely are talking about it, looking forward to it. So, yeah, Madam President, we've been on this for a while, I'm going to, uh, I'm going to defer my time to your next presentation and I look forward to it.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you so much. Uh, does anybody else have any other questions on this? Counselor Vona?
Um, thank you, Madam President. Um, thank you for, you guys for your presentation. Uh, thank you to the mayor and, um, uh, Counselor Kane for bringing this forward. Um, I, just thinking back when you said that, Devin and Jeff, that you said you had ten thousand responses on this and you had eighty-one percent favorability that they wanted to move this forward in the city, have the options and the value. I can remember back, um, it's coming up on a year, two, almost two years now, where we had a, uh, MBTA gate, um, over on Independence Ave, where the Pennsill Neighborhood Association brought it forward and got a seventy-five percent favorability that they wanted to open the gate. We vetted it here in this council about the rules and regulations and the parking tickets and upping the fees and we, we took our time with it and I thought we did a pretty good job with it. And I drive by it all the time to see how things are going, and it looks pretty smooth for the residents out there. Uh, I'm hoping that this, with the proper delivery, I guess I could call, and the hiccups that are, that are maybe looking, um, that can happen, like for instance, Counselor failing talking about, it's a spaghetti slash, lots of wires underneath that if there's any foreseen, um, problems or issues that you guys are ready for the attack of, if there is issues. Um, I'm looking forward to it. Um, I think if, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, you did say that average was around seventy dollars, um, internet service, and what we have right now here in Quincy is ninety-four dollars and five cents, is that correct? Are we up twenty-four dollars and five cents on the, um, national average?
Yeah, I think what's going on there, so this is data reported by the survey responses. Um, there, there's room for some error in there, so people are self-reporting. Um, cable bill, bills are inherently confusing because they've got so many line items, so people will, you know, they'll have an internet line item and then they'll have three different D's that they don't know how to make sense of. And so, and then they've got cable TV. So there is some room for error. We asked a specific question about what people are paying for internet, and that was the, that was the average that came back to us. But it also is fairly consistent when you add in the fees and the taxes, that, um, the first project we did, the, it was a dominant cable company in the neighborhood, and their, their average was ninety-three dollars, and we dropped the price to forty-seven dollars. But that is the price they made, forty-seven dollars, all in.
Forty-seven dollars, so, so you could get below that seventy-dollar average that we, that is the national average. So if things go right, and you said, you know, as we have these multifamilies that are next to each other, it can drive the price down. So, I mean, I was looking at your list, did, did you, um, we, we have a hundred thousand, um, residents, so you, what's a comparable town or city now that, that, that looks to us, like, is similar to us? Do you have anybody on your, you know, book of business?
So we're, we're multiple cities that are at a similar stage. So we're, we're working on deploying a pilot in a city of eight hundred thousand, so, I go back from Quincy. Uh, we're working with Santa Clarita, California, which is two hundred and fifty thousand, but they're also in a planning phase, getting ready for a pilot. Um, we, we finished the report for Redding, California, which is exactly your size, and they're starting to build their backbone to their network right now. So none that are fully deployed, but, um, a number of them that are your size are bigger in process.
Okay, okay. Um, my, my real, my only, my last question is also, um, and I think you spoke about a little bit, if you can elaborate a little bit more, is, are you going to be able to provide some services for low-income residents? Um, is there any type of, um, I guess, grant funding that you have built in to help out those folks that are, can have a tough time, um, affordability-wise to do this?
Yeah.
Can you, can you talk a little bit more about if you have anything in place or what you're looking to do?
Yeah, we, I was using language, I should have clarified, so earlier when I was talking about digital divide, that's exactly, so I should have clarified what digital divide means. It really means people that are on the other side of affordability, so they're not able to connect their home to the internet because of the expense. And so we're expecting, um, we're expecting the Biden administration to address that with a fairly robust broadband bill. Um, and, but we're also, when you move policy control to the city, the city's then in a position, so you think about a multifamily building, um, you know, a third of the cost is the maintenance and operation cost, and another third is the infrastructure cost. And it's not that you're going to waive those fees, but if you can share them among the residents in a building, then from a policy point of view, you're in a position to really drive down the cost. And then we will drive down the cost by creating competition among the ISPs. So I think we, I'm, I'm very optimistic we're going to do some interesting things in Quincy relative to digital divide.
Okay, I, that kind of clarifies it, I appreciate it. I, I'm thinking, looking forward to the future of this, and, um, I'm, I'm happy to hear my colleagues vet in on certain issues that may come up. So thank you guys for all your hard work and we're looking forward to twenty-twenty-one. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to check to see if anybody else has any other questions? Okay, within that, I actually have a few. Most of my questions are answered, so I only have three for you both. Um, and the first is for the modeling options, and so there were, I think, eight of them listed here in the presentation. Um, and then you also had a chart of some cities and towns based off of population size and the model type that they went with for the ISP options. And looking at, um, similar-sized populations, you know, Lafayette, Longmont in Colorado, Santa Monica in California, um, you know, two of them went with the electrical utility ISP option, and then the other one went with dark fiber business. And just going. And just going through, I know that we don't have a final option yet that we want to go with for what option we want to use. But I guess this is a two-pronged question, right? One is, do you have a recommendation for a city this size based off of the infrastructure that we currently have? And then I guess the second question is, is there an option to switch models? You know, once we enroll in one. So for example, if we go with the first one, which is a city-owned and operated model, you know, I don't want to let the perfect be the enemy of the good, right? And so if we pick that model and then after a certain period of time, you know, we hear from residents that that is not the option for us as a city, is it easy to switch models year over year? Or is that something that we have to enter into for a contract?
Yeah, it's a good question. So the, when you see municipal utility, so it is the case that most of the cities that have strong success doing municipal broadband, those cities own their own electric utility. So Chattanooga, Lafayette, Longmont, Fort Collins, all of those cities own their own electric utility. And I think Braintree is in that position. And they've done this. So so that's not an option for Quincy. So we were just trying to show where has this been successful around the country? Entry point, you know, we're going to have to take the fifth in terms of, I said, we do two things. We do consulting and then we also have a technology part of our company. And that technology side of our business is an open access technology. So it's set up so that 10 ISPs could come into Quincy or 15 or seven, whatever you, you know, however many came in, and that people could dynamically switch between their ISPs. So we do have a conflict of interest in this particular area. So we're not going to make a recommendation to the city. What will need to happen? The reason we're here is because Counselor Kane became aware of the success we had in our first project in Idaho. And he was interested in creating competition and that's why he invited us to the table in the first place. So he had an interest in that specific problem, which is creating competition, took it to the mayor and Chris Walker, and they said, yes, we agree. That's one of the significant problems we want to solve. So we're here as consultants because of our affiliation with that model. As we go forward, the city will want to do an independent analysis of the business model you're going to adopt. And we will need to create arms length for that process because of our conflict. We'll want to respond to it.
I really appreciate your honesty and your transparency in that process. I think that the presentation that you've brought to us has been tremendous. And, you know, I'm not a tech person either. And, you know, with the presentation tonight and the document that you presented to us, I feel really, you know, well-educated on this process. And this is just the first of many presentations in front of us. So I really do appreciate that we ended up going with you for this process so early on. But so to the second half of that question then, that hopefully you can answer is, do you know what the process is for us to switch models once we decide to go with one to start?
Yeah, so there's basically two two choices in front of you. One is open access and that means you have multiple ISPs. The other is single ISP, which a lot of these cities have done. Like Chattanooga is the biggest municipal network and Chattanooga is its own ISP. And so if you start by saying, do we want multiple ISPs or do we want one ISP? Then you really send yourself in one direction or the other. Now, can you change in the future? Could you start with open access and then say, you know what, Quincy wants to be an ISP? Could we do that? Yes, you could do that. It's easier to go from open access to single ISP. With our technology, you can do it, you could do it in less than five minutes. You could just shut down the options and have multiple ISPs and then you're single ISP. But it is much more difficult to go from single ISP to open access because the whole network management system has to be organized around open access.
Gotcha, okay.
So that's the real division is single ISP versus open access.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. That's helpful to know. And then for, a lot of my colleagues talked about the buried versus aerial. And you said you would be doing an analysis on that before we went into it. So for the cost that is projected in here, does that include any repair costs as well that you're thinking about?
That'll be in the maintenance and operation line item. So that is modeled, so again, if you do the math on, let's say we get 24,000 people to sign up and they're all paying $22 a month for AMNO, it creates a pretty healthy budget for repairs. And and we would, you know, repairs don't happen every day. But if you have a bad storm, then, you know, people may end up working 48 hours in the road to get things put back together. So but that that shows up not in the infrastructure line item, but in the maintenance and operations line item.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question, I guess this might be more of a comment as well. When you're talking about all of the community engagement that has to happen from this point onwards, I mean, this is really, really exciting. And I think, again, you know, folks across the public and private industries here in the city are really going to be looking forward to being a part of this process and educating themselves as well on what this means for them logistically day to day as well as, you know, cost-wise. And so, you know, with that, we do have a very large English as a Second Language population here in the city. So I just want to make sure that in the process moving forward, that, you know, if the city can be supportive, we have a lot of folks working on language access as well. We just, I want to make sure that, you know, we're being as inclusive as possible in that process.
Excellent, excellent point. And, you know, we needed to hear that just to make sure we don't overlook that as we go forward. So great point.
I really appreciate that. Thank you so much. And thank you again to my colleague, Counselor Kane, for bringing this forward and to the both of you, Jeff and Devin, for spending your time tonight, educating us on this first step in the process. I, you know, host these council meetings for us virtually. And I, every time I do them, I have to actually run it on my iPhone's hotspot because my interconnection is so poor. And so I'm super excited to stop using my personal hotspot for these meetings and using municipal broadband instead. So thank you guys so much. And Counselor Kane, thank you so much again for bringing the two of them in front of us tonight. I appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you. Appreciate all of your questions and love and engagement. So it's our pleasure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number two, 2020-130, in order for land disposition agreement, parcel R2, R3 in Hancock Park Lot.
Thank you. And we do have Mr. Gary from the city and Mr. Jim Shea, who is independent counsel to the city council here. And so I just want to open it up and give them a few minutes to speak and then we'll open up for questions. With that, Bill and Jim, the floor is yours.
Excuse me. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and through you two members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to return before the council to respond to questions that you first posed and other councillors first posed during the last session, where we made the presentation of the LDA for city parcels R2 and R3. For your request, I responded to your your inquiries regarding the summary of the parcel transfers, purchases and sales between the city and the developers and URDP under your question, first question. And they revolved around two things. One was a city project, the extension of Clydeden Street across Hancock Street down into the new city garage in the Hancock Lot and pedestrian civic space there. In the initial investments that LVC made in the city when they first came to the city, they purchased a number of those parcels along the east side of Hancock Street in the 1500 block of Hancock Street. And a number of those buildings, including the former Fuji Restaurant, were among buildings that had been occupied and would constitute the right of way for that roadway. Constructing that roadway was a meeper requirement that the city had to satisfy for us to continue to move forward with our URDP projects. And we were fortunate to receive a $2 million grant from Masworks to complete that project, although we were under a deadline to complete it. And in negotiations with LVC, they agreed that we could engage in a undisputed transfer of property. So it would spare the city the process and expense and more importantly, the delay of going through an eminent domain process to acquire those properties. So we did acquire them as outlined in my summary of your answers to your your questions. And the total consideration that was exchanged was $6,500,000 for those process, for those exchanges. Also, in October of 2019, both of these transactions occurred toward the end of last year. We were proceeding with the rehabilitation of the Ross Lot area, the realignment of what the road that's known as the parking way and to accommodate that and other future infrastructure needs that are companion to that real, that realignment of the road as well as the installation of a number of new infrastructure. We took through a friendly transaction, thereby foregoing an eminent domain transaction, the 100 parking way building for the sum of $9,250,000. I might add that just as LVC had done for a number of the tenants that were previously occupying the buildings that we acquired for the extension of the Clydeden Street Road, the new road to the garage, they assisted a number of their tenants to relocate. Likewise, in the case, one of them, when they first built their own building at 1500, was Gentle Dental, who had been relocated from one of the buildings that was taken down to build 1500. But they relocated to 100 Parking Way temporarily. And once we were acquiring it, they moved Gentle Dental back to their new building at 1500 Parking Way. They had one other tenant, the daycare, Rainbow Adult Daycare Center, which was a social services organization that they were able to attract to Quincy. First time that organization has opened an office in the south of the city, in the South Shore area. And they were able also to relocate that operation from 100 Parking Way to a building they purchased on Federal Street that they purchased for $1,800,000 and invested approximately 1.2 million to accommodate the special needs of the clients, the Rainbow Adult Daycare Center. So that was two businesses that were saved to remain as viable healthcare and social service agencies in the city. You asked for an appraisal for the two parcels being sold to LVC. I provided a copy of the restricted and conditional appraisal that had been furnished to the city for the purpose of valuing R2. The initial appraisal was at $150 per square foot. And that appraisal, as you may or may not recall, these parcels had not been fully defined when they were first created. And after that conditional appraisal was completed, we looked more closely and we determined that the square footage, which had originally been estimated at, give or take, 27,800 square feet, was actually reduced to 25,298 square feet, which is a 16% reduction. And it was also burdened by new easements that were required for the construction of the city garage. And that included sidewalk easements, sewer water easements, utility easements of other descriptions for the garage and for the benefit of the O'Connell property going to and from the garage. Also, a national grid easement was there as well. So that, we agreed a negotiated price of $3,502,000 for R2. For R3, because, and I think we've all been aware of this over the course, at least of the four years that I've been working with council on these issues, that there were several parcels on the southern stretch of Hancock Street going south from where the new Clydeden Street extension is. LVC had purchased most of that block, but there were several recalcitrant property owners. And as they say in the memo, the city proposed to LVC and they agreed that we would shift the burden of acquiring those properties to LVC, which would also benefit the city by reducing our litigation exposure as well as time and delay costs for relocating tenants as a city obligation pursuant to an eminent domain taking. And so the negotiated price for for that property was $1,330,000. So between the, that was a total combined cost to LVC of $5,330,000 to acquire R2 and R3. And the, I'm sorry, for $5,330,000, the total combined cost for two, the two parcels would be $8,832,000. The next question related to timeline for permitting and project completion. Timeline is 180 days to file for a certificate of consistency from the planning department for both parcels. And on one parcel, LVC will have 30 months to complete construction of R3 following issuance of the COC and 36 months to complete R2. LVC's total spend on property acquisitions in the URDP district, cost and taxes. It's a relatively lengthy summary here. So I will just read the summary, but the items are enumerated in the sections that are outlined here. And in sum, the answer to your question was that outright, like candidly, this surprised me. I didn't realize they had purchased this much property because I was not involved in many of them. But LVC purchased properties between 2014 and the present, totaling $35,850,000. They made improvements to those properties totaling $6,900,000. And they incurred carrying costs exceeding $500,000 for several of the buildings that we were going to acquire, thereby sparing us the cost of relocation of those tenants. To build their new building at 1500 Hancock Street with Nova Residences, they invested approximately $42 million. Last year, LVC paid $860,000 in property taxes in 2019 and thus far have paid $4,200,000 in property taxes since it first invested in Quincy. So their total investment since 2014 in properties purchased in the building that they built as well as $4,200,000 has been $84,750,000. The parking arrangements for R2 and R3, to answer the question as to whether or not they would be utilizing spaces in the new city garage, the answer to that is yes. They were allocated up to 150 spaces under the LDA that they that they negotiated with the city to build 1500. They have only used about 87 of those spaces, even though it's 171. They have only used about 87 of those spaces, even though it's a 171-unit building. So they utilized far less than what they were allocated. And there was some difficulty in making that allocation during the time that we were negotiating the LDA for H1, which is the designation for that parcel, really predicated on the type of clientele they were going after to occupy those buildings. People who were transit oriented, who were looking to rely upon Quincy's access to the red line, the fact that many of them were college students in size of those units. So the issue was whether or not they would have to fulfill under their COC obligations certain parking ratios for the proposed two new buildings, which they will, and whether or not it would be fair and equitable to allow them to utilize the surplus that remained of that 150 to satisfy a portion of those parking requirements as well as build within those buildings parking capacity as well. So that is the, and that's embodied in section 26 of the LDA. And with that, I'll be pleased to answer any questions you may have, Madam President, or members through YouTube that the council may have.
Thank you, Bill. I just want to give an opportunity to our independent counselor as well, Mr. Jim Shea.
Oh, yes, by all means, yes.
Make any comments before we open it up for questions as well. Mr. Shea?
I'm mute. Yes. When we were, when I was here last, the document had been, I think the first draft was about over, about a year ago. And a lot had happened in the course of the year, which is all positive. But they really hadn't been reflected in the document itself. So it was pretty confusing. So that was the first task was to, just to bring it into the present. A lot of the things that were cast as things that had to be done had already been done. We want to make, be clear about that. And then there were a lot of definitions. You know, I don't know how, what they used as a precedent. It was one of the LDAs, but it didn't quite fit. And the definitions, particularly of the approval date or the date, when, when the clock started running, which is important to get a sense of, of how much time they have to, to perform, that, that was a little confusing. So those were cleaned up. And I think that, you know, at this point, it's just a matter of, you know, the next sequence is the council's approval and then it has to go to GHCD. But council approves it, mayor signs it, Department of Housing and Community Development has to approve it, and then we're sort of off and running. We have timelines for getting permits, starting construction and completing construction. So I think all those have been addressed. And if you have any questions, just let me know.
Thank you so much to you both. So I'm going to go ahead and open it up to my colleagues for any questions or comments. But to you both, Counselor Harris, we'll go to you first.
Thank you, Madam President. Two, two meetings ago, I had made a motion to approve in committee. And that, that went eight to zero with stipulations that information was going to be provided by Mr. Gary and Mr. Shea and Counselor Shea. And I believe that, that most of the questions, I believe, on my, as far as I'm concerned, have been met. And we also had, I want to make a clear point, that we also had a public meeting that evening, two meetings ago, and which, you know, anybody who had any issues or complaints or could have, could have attended, it was advertised, could have spoken at that time. I, I think that, you know, I hear about investing in Quincy. When I hear a number just under $85 million, I think it was $84,750, and I'm doing good if that's the right number. But all I can say is, I think that, I think this is, this is something that, as far as I'm concerned, meets, meets what, everything, I mean, it's, it's gone on for, goes way back. And the fact that it's, it's out of committee because there was the eight to zero vote of approval, I'm going to make a motion to approve. And everybody at this point, you know, it can be seconded or not seconded. It gives everybody a chance to ask Mr. Gary and Mr. Shea, who I think have, have really done a diligent job, meeting everything that, again, repeat myself, everything that we needed to hear. I'm satisfied. And I think it's, it's, I think it's a great, great thing to finish what's going on downtown. And I see what's going on downtown firsthand and on a daily basis. And I'm excited. And I think, I think people should be excited. The amount of tax, tax dollars that have flown through, needed tax dollars that has flown through this, to the city has, is, is very important and, and is a plus. So I make a motion to approve 2020 130 order land disposition parcel, R2, R3 Hancock parking lot.
Thank you, Counselor. So we do have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor McCarthy. And I do just want to make sure to leave the floor open for any questions or comments. Counselor McCarthy, did you want to make a comment as well?
Just a quick comment. Thank you, Madam President. Follow-up one on Counselor Harris's comments. $85 million staggering number and a great number to see that LBC is invested in Quincy. The Hancock Nova Residences have come along great. And, you know, I pulled some of the LDA apart to take a good look at it. Funny when you take a good look at it, and I know we pay attention to it a lot. The Hancock lot is now pretty much populated. And I can remember a day when there was a lot of discussion, it's going to go in the lot, how's it going to be laid out logistically, will it work well, will the parking work well? And it's worked pretty well. And I know that the Ross lot is going to be next. And the administration is dedicated to make sure that works, working with us. So it's a, it's a good night, I think, to be able to second a motion by Counselor Harris for, for those two parcels and thank LBC for being invested in Quincy. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mahoney?
Thank you, Madam President. So I just have a couple of questions. And I'm going to start with, and I, and I apologize, I was not at that ordinance meeting. I did have a family issue that was happening. I'm happy to say that my dad is home and doing well. So thank you for all the counselors who have reached out. And so to, I'm going to start with Bill Gary. Bill, I tried to watch the meeting. However, it was technologic, we had some technical difficulties. So there was a lot of, might be, might be my home, it just wasn't coming through very clearly. I think what you had said, though, and I just want clarification, because I know LBC had purchased, I think, the last half, 1570 Hancock Street in March of 20, I think it was 2020 or February 2020. I know that the tenants at that end of the street, Caddyberries, Napoli's, the Smoke Shop, I think, are all paying their rent to now own stake. I think you had said, though, in the presentation, and correct me if I'm wrong, that all of the tenants, that they negotiated with all the tenants. Is that correct?
Counselor, I don't know that I said that they have all negotiated with tenants. I could ask, you know, Jonathan Miller, who's their, you know, executive VP, as to which tenants they have negotiated with. What I may have said was that it's their, it's their obligation to negotiate with those, those tenants.
So just sort of curious, maybe before we go-
They purchased those as private transaction.
Yeah, they purchased them as, I believe it was, maybe Jonathan, could you tell me when you purchased 1570 Hancock Street?
I believe it was right at the end of 2019.
2019. And did it close? Because I think the first rent that was paid was in March from the tenants. Is that correct to you guys?
I would have to go back to accounting and see when that first payment was made.
Yeah, I think the closing, that's what I was, I've, I've come to understand that's when the first tenant, that's when the tenants had to start paying. So, so one of the concerns I have is that, although I understand the eagerness of the council to, to want to move ahead with this project, but the introduction usually, I went back and checked for, for LDAs, they usually take about three meetings typically to get to a final vote. And that's perfectly fine because that's the will of this council to want to take it out of the ordinance and to vote on it and to, for us to the decision. But I know in all of the other ones, I went back and looked, and there was some big concerns. You know, when we've had businesses such as the three I just mentioned that have, they've been good businesses for Quincy and they, they have, and I know the mayor goes to Napoli's on a regular basis, he says so on his, his podcast. And I'm not sure, you know, what the standing is with them, but I don't, I do know they have long-term, they have long-term leases. So what is, what's, what's, how will that be worked out? I just have another question too. So that would be to Jonathan. So how do you plan on working that out with them? Is that something that's been, been worked out or is?
So, you know, today we've been mostly focused on the land exchange aspect of this deal because ultimately the timing of all of this is dictated by the passage of the LDA. We have started to and will continue to work with all tenants going down all available avenues to try and reach an amenable solution.
Yeah. Well, knowing that you purchased the building, you purchased the building back in February, so then back in, back in the end of 2019, beginning of 2020, and we also had the COVID crisis. And the original plan that was presented, I think, I think the original plan that was presented to the city council was originally presented in 2019. A second one, because of the new, the new council we're confirming in 2020, the same exact one was presented again in January of 2020. Then when, when I was reviewing it and working with Bill Gary and Jim Shea, it was once again pre-presented in October with a little bit of changes, but not much. But in all of that situation, what we have still is we have businesses, good businesses in the city of Quincy that are looking for a fair and equitable display. So I'm going to go back to Bill Gary on this. Mr. Gary, in the URDP, and it's just, it's just a question I have, that same lot, 1570, was in those three businesses where I identified in the URDP that was also dated in 2019. So are you saying that the city owes no obligation to those businesses because the LBC has purchased them?
Not necessarily. However, the primary responsibility is with LBC because it was a private transaction. I think what you were referring to, I think all those properties have been placed on the city's taking list.
Actually, it was just, it was just, I don't have the document in front of me. It was just something that I was remembering. Maybe, Mr. Shea, could you, could you help, Jim, could you help navigate me through that? We had a conversation, a long conversation about the URDP and the difference between the takings and then also its obligations for businesses.
Well, I think that if so, if there, if these businesses that were on the list are displaced, they're entitled to relocation, whether it is actually done by eminent or formal taking or not. So, and I think that would, not to put words in Mr. Gary's mouth, but I think what he's suggesting is that by agreement, the LBC has agreed to assume those obligations, the primary obligation for taking care of the, paying the relocation costs.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. You even always put words in my mouth on that, correct?
It's also helpful.
And that, that is the essence of the agreement that we have with the LBC. And based upon their track record of working with us on that, we are, we are indeed hoping that a fair and equitable relocation can be devised for the tenants. And I know from earlier conversations with Mr. Miller that, you know, they have done that in the past and that there are some tenants who are, they're in discussions with currently. I don't, I cannot speak to what their discussions have been with the two businesses you mentioned, the pizza shop and Caddyberries.
Great, there's three businesses, actually.
Smoke shop.
Yeah, and the reason why I'm bringing them up strictly is because, like I said, I was not able to be at the ordinance meeting. I had, I had a, a family issue. And the intention was that, you know, I, I believe that we had the public hearing and it's, it's very unfortunate because these businesses have all reached out to me. And, you know, that night it was taken out of committee and the next day, I think all the businesses had reached out to me just because it's just a, it's just a, it's an unfortunate situation because the next, the very next day, they got the, the email from LBC basically saying that the building was going to be demolished. And, you know, that's not a, it's not really, I think everybody knows it's going to happen, but it's, 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 it's something that could, that needs to be rectified and dealt with. So I know the businesses will all be working with LBC, but it's just, it's a very unfortunate thing in this time and climate of COVID. And, you know, the fact that it seemed a little disingenuous to be able to, to say that we are trying to support, support local businesses and then at the same time, basically, you know, they felt like the rug was kind of pulled up a little bit, their legs a little bit with this. So I just, I just really feel strongly because I do support our local businesses and I do hope that LBC will work very closely with them. And I know that they, all three of them that I just mentioned have long-term leases. So they're, they're not short-term leases, they have long-term leases. So that's something that needs to be, to be rectified as they move forward. And then, Mr. Shea, I just have a quick question for you too. So I know that when we were speaking prior to, prior to the, the ordinance meeting, I think you said, I just want to make sure because I'm not surprised you didn't say this, that we were, we were, there was a section in the, in the, in the, in the agreement that was kind of, the order should be ABC and it was more like ACB in the way, you know, please sign, the council signs tonight, then it goes to the state. I think you just explained that.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, go ahead.
And that has, yeah, that's been rectified, correct? Because when, in the original document, that was very convoluted. I think, I think really the original document last, and I'm so glad, really I'm glad that there was a chance for you and Mr. Gary and for LBC to be able to go back to the table and work out some of the issues that we had because the original documents that voted out of council had a lot of, you know, it was, it was a bit arbitrary on both sides. It wasn't very clear. Would that be, would that be covering it lightly? That it was-
Yeah, I, I think I said that, or maybe I said to someone that, you know, I didn't think there was any intention to mislead because it was, it was unclear. I mean, it sort of affected both sides almost equally. And, you know.
It doesn't necessarily a great contract to sign into the, right?
Well, we like, we prefer clarity, but, so I think that that was, and again, I, it, part of it is it's, it's a complicated transaction. And it, you know, it's, it basically evolved, it evolved over a year and the document was a little, was far behind. And I think it's caught up.
And Counselor Mahoney, I can say that Counsel Shea helped streamline the document and to show us a way to be more straightforward and less confusing. And I think it, you know, did benefit all of us who were struggling with the nomenclature in, in the document. And so it did help us get through to a clearer, more functional process for this to unfold.
Yes, and that's unfortunate, Mr. Gary, because that's something that I was, you know, when I, when I look at a document like that, because it was so, and this is the part that I was struggling with, it was, it was, it was very clear that it was a boilerplate that was kind of filled in with bits and pieces from maybe a former LDA. from maybe a former LDA. And I really do appreciate the fact that we have Jim Shea on retainer for the council because had we not, and had we not cleared this up then, you know, if there were any problems in there, as there is, because it's a living, breathing document that will change as we go forward. Hopefully not too much, but could change in some situations. It was, you know, it probably would be hard for either parties to be able to hold that up. So going back to the LDA in the parking and maybe, Mr. Gary, you could explain this once again, because I think what you were saying was that in the original LDA, LBC had 150 parking spaces in the garage, which they only used 84, is that correct?
High 80s, it may fluctuate, it might be 87. Actually, I'll defer to Jonathan, you can tell us exactly.
Sure, so in the original LDA for that building, we did adjust by a quarterly basis. So at the end of last quarter, I believe we were using around 80 spaces. But like Bill said, it fluctuated between 77 and 87.
So is your hope then to take the difference between 150 and put it into the R2, R3, is that what you're saying?
In order to meet the ratio, combined with the integral parking for both the R2 and R3 building programs. We built internal garages to that building.
So in the original, in the original, in the original LDA that you did, how did you come up with 150? Does that meeting the ratio for that one?
Well, that was done on a completely separate project.
Okay, so with the 150 spaces that are in the garage, I'm just trying to catch it up to where is 150 spaces in the garage? Is that just something you negotiated with the garage? Or is that something that was used in the original?
Yes, on the original, you know, because essentially there was no real multifamily development downtown at that point beside West Chestnut and Ten Faxon. You know, that was derived from, you know, some of the attributes of those buildings. However, it's become clear since we built the building and now managed it for two years that we do have a more transit-oriented clientele and that the ratios we originally might have anticipated are likely not to come to fruition.
So I guess what I'm going back to is what was the, so when you built the building, you built it with the intention that the tenants would have the option to, would they lease the parking space or was it part of their, was it part of their tenants?
It would be a separate lease.
So it's separately, so people are not leasing it? And this is where you have the extra spaces? And that's where you come into the 84? You think that people are more or less walking to the train station and not utilizing cars, right?
Yes. Or they're two-bedroom apartments that might utilize one car, have people who have zero vehicles.
Yep, and Mr. Gary, for the ratio for this development, what's the ratio for, for the building that they would need to have to the amount of units that they have, that they would have to have for each building, apartment?
That's the determination made by the planning department through the COC.
So when they go to the planning department, they need to ask for variance or forgiveness for the ratio if they're not meeting the ratio for the downtown? Is it 0.75? I can't remember.
That's the whole purpose for the COC process is for the planning department to influence based upon the number of units that they're going to include in their building. That's how the planning department will determine what the parking ratio should be.
I see Mr. Fatsy's online. So Mr. Fatsy, maybe for a building the size of R2 and R3, could you tell me approximately how many spaces that they would need? Or can you tell me that?
I have to have the number of spaces, the ultimate number after their design. So it's all determined on how many units are in the building?
So when you were, so just backing up for seconds, so when we approved the original LDA and they came up with 150 spaces because it was kind of a formula that was done, and that the planning board approved it in that sense, and they're only using 80 of them, is it okay that they tend, they now say, we don't need those other 60 and bring it over to another development? I guess I'm trying to understand that math because it could change, you know, your tenants could change in their original development, the Nova Suites could change and somebody could come in and want those spaces. And if we have three buildings that want spaces, how we, and we're dividing them out, it could create a problem, just trying to understand that.
Well, as I said, the number of spaces that are going to be determined is going to be tied to how many units. There is a 0.5 space per unit floor that is, you know, in the URDP. So you can take it from there, but the additional spaces that would be required, you know, you know, will be augmented by the difference between, as I understand it, augmented by the difference between the number of spaces that LBC has currently utilized and the 150 that were contractually obligated to them through the first LDA. So that to me is, you know, it's just going to be a simple math after we see how many units they have and discuss other things as far as their parking ratios, because again, these are mixed-use buildings. So I would have to, you know, just tell you that we have to see what the final plans are and the final scale of their building is. But if your question is, are they entitled to use those other spaces? I believe they are.
Okay, that is my question, simply because I believe, I wasn't sure how the first one was negotiated or how it was passed in the planning board for the number of units they have in the Nova Suites, how many spaces they were utilizing there. They had 150. I'm asking that question both to LBC and to Mr. Fatsy's because there was the building that was built, approximately how many spaces is covering it to make sure that they're meeting their quota should. You know, their tenants change and the need and the desire for them, you know, what you have today, what they're using might change tomorrow. So if we utilize other spaces that, you know, you have different tenants that come in that do have cars, let's say they do want to pay for that lease to have a car, is there going to be a problem with parking?
Well, that, the, you know, there'll be a detailed parking study that will be supplied by LBC.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll be able to take those metrics right up. That parking study determine what they're asking for and how they wish to fit out the parking, the numbers. And we will then, you know, do the math. Like I said, there's a floor of 0.5. They may want more spaces, they may need less spaces. But again, they are going to build spaces in both of their own buildings as they come forth with those plans. We'll understand what their capacity, you know, how they, how they view it. And like I said, we'll, we'll see how many spaces they need at the 0.5 plus if there are, you know, other, other needs and other pieces of that plan. So again, retail has its, has its ratio, the actual, you know, living units have a different ratio. So we'll, we'll be able to see better when we have a compilation of exactly how many units they propose at either lot.
Okay, thank you very much. And then my last question is, and, and again, I believe, and I'm trying to see because I wrote a note down regarding this, of course, I don't know. And I think this might be to Mr. Miller. Of the current spaces that you have in Quincy Center and the current Nova Suites and that, I know you have Gentle Dental, who was relocated, I think from, they were over in the Ross, I think over to, to your location. How many square feet do you have of space that's available that's not, that's not leased out yet?
In regards to specifically Gentle Dental?
No, in regards to specifically any commercial space on the first floor, what's, what's the amount of space that you have remaining that's not, that's not been leased out?
Yeah, about 5,000 square feet out of 14,500 square feet remaining.
Okay, so you have 5,000 square feet left and 14,000 square feet leased. Okay, and then with the new units in R2 and R3, how many, how much square feet of retail do you have?
Well, I can tell you what the proposal is at the moment. But as Jim says, this is all a native process through point.
I understand, so in the proposal, how much space do you have?
For R2, we feel that that corner does not lend itself very well to retail driven by foot traffic.
Okay.
There's no retail in R2. And I believe it actually states in the LDA the range for R3, which currently is between 10 and 12 and a half thousand square feet.
And then for the three businesses that are currently in your location, just curious, how many square feet are they occupying though?
Which businesses specifically are?
They're all on 1570, so it's the Smoke Shop, Patty Berry's and Napoli's.
The Smoke Shop, I believe is about 1,500 square feet. Patty Berry's is another 800. So we're talking about in the range of 3,500 square feet.
So it's very small, okay.
And we actually have already come to an agreement with Rent-A-Center to leave that premises by a date certain. Happily, I'm able to report that four of the eight tenants we have been able to come to an agreement with thus far.
They're in a different building though, so Patty Berry's is Smoke Shop and Napoli's were all in a different building that was just acquired by, by your organization recently, in the last, in the last year. So, and they all have, I don't think Rent-A-Center had a long-term lease. Okay, that wraps up my questions again. I appreciate the opportunity to ask, thanks. Thank you, Councilor Palamucci.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't even know who I'm talking to, maybe Mr. Gary?
Yes, Councilor.
What, good evening, sir. What recourse does the city have if they don't build? And when is that trigger?
Well, there's, there's a outside date for them to start construction and complete construction. I think the remedy is, and I'll defer to Mr. Shea on this because we had a lot of discussion about this, is the, is the return of their deposit, which is a minimal deposit because they invested so much money in purchasing the properties necessary to assemble the deposit.
Mr. Shea, is there a reverter? Is there a reverter?
No, there's not a reverter.
So what happens if they, what happens if they, what timeframe is in here? Enforceable timeframe is in here? If any?
Well, by enforceable, as, as Mr. Gary just mentioned, the remedy is, is keeping their deposit. So basically, if they don't perform, you know, that's, that's what happens to them. So the question is, so given that-
Their deposit is what, like $50,000 or something?
It's $55,000.
$55,000, right, so. So, I interrupted you, I'm sorry. Please complete your sentence, Mr. Shea.
So, so basically, it's just a matter, so what we, given that that was sort of a negotiated deal, what I was concerned about was that, that they didn't tie the property up indefinitely.
Right.
And so I think we've solved that, that basically you can, you can terminate the agreement if they don't perform within certain periods of time. That is, get the permits, start construction, complete construction. So, but beyond that, there's really not a mechanism, there's no guarantee, there's no credit guarantee for them to perform. Which is not, you know, really unusual, I mean, to the extent that they're, I think in this case, the fact that they've invested so much in the area, the city was, was comfortable with that as a track record for trusting that they would proceed. But, you know, there's, there's limits to trust. So the key is, is to not have them be able to tie the property up indefinitely. And I think we solved that.
Okay, we saw that by, essentially it's a, the property reverts back to us if they don't perform.
Yeah, or they don't, or they don't get to, they don't get to buy it. They lose their opportunity to buy the property.
Right, okay, that's, that's kind of what I was driving at.
And that, Councilor, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, it's okay.
That, between the two parcels, that's $8 million, $8,832,000 that they're putting forward as, as the purchase price.
Right, and listen, I don't know that anyone doubts their desire to build. I mean, I don't, I certainly don't. I don't know if anyone else harbors any doubt about that. I mean, I think this is the first time, well, you know, they come to us already developing in the downtown, right? That's, that's the first time we've considered an LDA with someone who has a history of developing the downtown. I think Mr. O'Connell was a little bit different too because, you know, there's a level of trust there because of his commitment to the community over, you know, the past decades and his ability to develop big projects and to deliver them successfully. So I think, I think between, I don't have any, I don't have any doubt that that's their desire. And I'm, and I'm, you know, just always a little bit cautious about that. I feel, I feel as though, and this is me personally, you don't have to speak, you don't have to respond, Bill. But I feel a little bit burnt by Fox Rock, given how long they've held the land and appear to have done not much with it, right? But, you know, we won't get into that tonight. And I also don't want to hold that against LBC, the fact that Fox Rock hasn't performed. You know, normally we wouldn't be considering one LDA until the last one was done. But again, that's not LBC's fault and we can't penalize them for Fox Rock's conduct, right? But we need to learn from the past. And in my perspective, I feel as though that was one that got away from us. Even though we had reverter language in there, it wasn't triggered, it didn't become active until a triggering event, which Fox Rock controls, which was the declaration of the MOB 10. So there's not, there's no process to revert at this point. But it sounds like with this particular LDA, we have, we have the ability, a better ability to claw back the property if they don't perform. Because there's no conditions essentially that they control other than time, right, and ability to get through permitting. Unlike with Fox Rock where there was, there's a third-party element to it. We don't have that here. Let me ask you, Mr. Shea, what's the city's exposure for relocation costs to the four tenants who are not under agreement?
Well-
If any?
I think they're obligated by, if the occupants that are displaced have a legal right to relocation costs. And you've shifted that to LBC in this case, but if they don't perform, presumably it's an obligation of the city.
So tell me how that, how that plays out. Tell me the scenario in which that would become the city's liability. Like I'm having trouble kind of picturing how that would work, where it would come on the city. Because they would have, that would be if they're kicked out?
Yeah, that's a good point.
And they pay the relocation costs? And then LBC disappears or whatever, they go defunct? Then they could come to the city and say, hey, we were displaced because of your URDP and then these guys bought us, right? Is that the?
Well, yeah, so if they has, if they were terminated, if they had, if the LBC had the right to terminate them, which apparently they don't because they've got a long-term lease, and Mr. Bailey can chime in if he'd like, but they would be entitled to relocation. But here, because this, a taking wasn't done, so if, well, how much I want to say?
I get, I get what you're saying. I get what you're saying. No, I understand where you're going, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, got it, okay. That only, that only happens in the event of an LBC default of some sort on their business, right?
Right, okay.
Jonathan, Mr. Miller, Vice President Miller, what, what are you going to do for these folks, these four? for these folks, these four folks? I'm gonna put you on the spot a little bit. What's, um, you know, I talked to, uh, I talked to the, uh, the owners of Paddy Berry's today. I sent you that, and I gave you a heads up. I sent you an email, told you I'd be asking about this tonight. I wanted to give you a fair warning. Um, uh, they're resident, the owners are residents of Warford. They're a long-time business in the city. You had other businesses who were affected down in June, but they're a long time. Apparently, the mayor's favorite pizza place. I don't know why. Ms. Mahoney knows that, but I will take her word for it. Um, uh, so what are, what are you guys gonna do for these, for these folks? I mean, what, for me, I feel like you have to give me some sort of level of confidence or reassurance here that, you know, we're not saying, okay, take the land and then just, you know, stick it to these small business owners. What, you know, what's, what's the discussion? And I don't want you to give away any legal, you know, strategy or anything, or, just as I wouldn't ask them to. Um, you're both entitled to, they're entitled to all of their legal remedies under the law. Uh, I advise them to get an attorney. I know you have an attorney, they already have one. Um, you know, you have an attorney, and your lawyers will probably work it out. Um, but, I'm just, just as a broad sense, what, you know, what are you gonna do for those guys?
Sure, so, you know, I think there are a lot of different, uh, avenues, uh, depending on which business, uh, we're talking about, but, uh, you know, before the fifteen hundred LDA passed, uh, we were in a substantially similar situation. Uh, you know, there, we successfully reached an agreement with The Half Door, uh, which was another bar that had, uh, multiple years left on their lease. Uh, we relocated Hancock Market to another property proximate in downtown. Uh, we were able to, as Bill said, relocate Gentle Dental to Parkway, and then back from Parkway to, uh, the newly constructed fifteen hundred Hancock building. Uh, we also were able to find Falafel King, another one of the tenants in the fifteen hundred block, uh, space in North Quincy, uh, where they're actually doing more business than they ever did in, uh, their prior location. Uh, still go-
Which they take issue with, because they no longer walk down there for lunch and bring it back to office, but I'll, I'll grant you a pass on that one.
It's, uh, no, I mean, we are dedicated to, to working with these tenants to make sure, uh, that we can agree on something that is amicable and agreeable for, for both sides.
And so the four, the, so there's four that, um, out of eight tenants, there's four that you don't have agreements worked out with yet, right?
Uh, correct.
Okay, and what's been the, um, amount of involvement that you've had with them and the nature of it thus far? Again, you don't, don't give away any, you know, legal secrets or trade secrets, whatever, but have they been receptive? Have you guys made significant outreach? What, you know, what's the relationship's been like?
I can tell you that, you know, initial communications went out over ten months ago, and that we have been in communication, uh, with all these tenants. Uh, like I said previously, really, the, the land exchange piece of this deal is the precursor to all of this, uh, because without that starter for the timeline, we really don't have, uh, you know, the construct with which to, uh, you know, work this out with each and every tenant. So, you know, should the land exchange go through, we then know what sort of timeline that'll trigger. We can then start working, uh, you know, proactively with all of these tenants. And we look forward to doing that, uh, you know, hopefully, starting very soon.
So, I mean, you have a ti- you have a timeline, right? I mean, if you, you wanted to get rolling in six months, that, that only gives you so much of a window to work something out with these guys, right?
Sure, but, uh, you know, like Bill and Jim, uh, Fatsies have said, you know, this is gonna go through a, an inter process of planning. Uh, this is by no means, uh, the last step, you know, that the LDA is passed, and then, you know, we go out and build tomorrow. Uh, so, you know, there's still a lot of time left here. Uh, we've done a lot of outreach so far, and, uh, you know, most importantly, uh, we do have experience in this area, and, uh, you know, we do look forward to working with, with everyone on that block, uh, to make sure, uh, a resolution is reached.
Okay. Okay, um, and, at the last meeting, uh, I had, I had discussed, and I think, um, a couple of other, other counselors did as well, but I, I, we had discussed, um, uh, surety bond, uh, performance bond relative to this, and I, I know, uh, you and, and the attorneys have had some discussions, um, in between last meeting and this meeting, and you shared that with me, but I just want to, one, state it publicly, and then I, so that it's said publicly what your response was, and then also, um, for the other counselors, I don't know if you spoke to them one-on-one, but, um, can, can you just speak, Mr. Miller, as to, um, my request or our request to explore a, a, a performance bond for this project?
Absolutely. Uh, so, you know, we, we have looked into this, um, you know, it is a construct that exists. However, given the pandemic and its rippling effects throughout the financial, insurance, and actuarial fields, uh, underwriting a performance-based bond like this right now really isn't a moving target. Uh, so as a result of that, they're much more expensive than they have been in the recent past, and ultimately, it would be a, a fairly large financial burden to the project. In addition to the unforgiving financial climate, we also have concerns that ultimately, for us to secure the financing, uh, strongest possible financing, a performance bond will actually be a complicating factor. Uh, we think that lenders will see this as an additional liability, and ultimately, as an impediment to securing the financing, uh, in what is already a very difficult lending environment today. Uh, so, while I can, uh, appreciate, uh, you know, on the, on the face of it, it, it seems like a good solution, uh, we think that this would ultimately complicate some of the timelines that, uh, you know, we are committing to.
And, and as I told you and, and our attorneys, I, 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 I'm not gonna, um, keep pushing for something that, uh, appears to be unreasonable. I, I'm comfortable with, yeah, I wanted to add some extra incentive, but I'm comfortable with what I began talking to Mr. Gary and Mr. Shea about, that the, essentially, the revert, the reversion of the land back to the city, failure to perform, um, safeguards the city enough, uh, in terms of, uh, in terms of the same, the same safeguards that a surety bond or performance bond would, would, uh, would offer. So I, you know, I appreciate you guys looking into that. Certainly don't want to overburden the project. I want to burden the project just right, just the correct amount of burden on you guys, um, uh, which I trust Mr. Fatsies will help us with his giggling, but I trust he'll help us when you guys get to the, uh, to the planning board, and, uh, you're talking about your ten percent art fund contribution, your affordable housing, uh, responsibilities. I look forward to, we'll be keeping a close eye on that. You know, those guys will, those guys will burden you just right over there. Um, I think that's all I have in terms of questions. I appreciate all the work that everyone's done, um, Mr. Bailey, uh, Mr. Shea, and Mr. Gary, uh, kind of hammering out the language. It is typical to the LDA processes that, you know, it's, it's always a work in progress, you know, it's always a, uh, fine-tuning happens right up to, you know, right up to the day of. I will state for the record, uh, again, that I do not like the climate and extension. It doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. Uh, I feel like it's a use of money that has no significant beneficial return. And I've, I know I've spent at least an hour at past meetings arguing back and forth or debating with Mr. Gary about the usefulness of it, so I won't, um, I won't look to engage him again tonight. Uh, I just kind of wanted to state that for, you know, with sanity purposes. It won't bite the bite, but I want, just want to state that. Um, okay. Thank you very much, Madam President. Uh, thank you, Mr. Miller, Mr. Shea.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Gary, Mr. Shea, and Mr. Miller? And Council Falen?
Okay, there is. Um, thank you, Madam President, through you. Um, I guess, I'm happy with the process, because when we first saw the document, I thank our attorney Shea for putting a lot of changes in it. I've read through it, it seems, and a lot of work has been done on this, and it's very important, but, um, I also got the call, like, uh, like, Council Palmucci, and I think several of, of my colleagues, on these longstanding businesses there. And I guess, what you're telling me, Mr. Gary, is this really falls down to LBC. It's their responsibility to deal with the tenants. Is that correct?
Through our agreement together. However, agreements, um, generally involve partners, and the city is willing to work with LBC to effectuate, as Mr. Miller indicated, a equitable, uh, resolution to that relocation obligation.
So, um, they're, they're responsible with these people with long-term leases. They're responsible to pay for, get the location and all that with them, so.
To, yes, to, to, to work out a, and, and as, as Jonathan said, and, and I witnessed, um, over the course of the last four years in working with them, um, LBC has done that for virtually all of their, uh, tenants who had to be relocated.
And I know that, I know they have, because we're approving an, an, an agreement here with a company that has actually completed one. So I think that's a, that's a huge issue.
Yes, sir.
They have completed it. Um, anyone who looks out the back now, where you got the, the fours building, the new O'Connell building, the indoor building, it's at behind over, it's beautiful. They did a great job. I think that's, uh, but I, I, I do have a concern with those long-term businesses. I'll give it to you, Jonathan. This is probably gonna be in your, your wheelhouse, that, um, they are long-term businesses in Quincy. They have people that would not only have businesses, but live in the city, and, um, want us to make sure that they receive a fair, fair and equitable settlement, that, um, you know, they've taken into consideration these people. Three of them anyways have almost seven-year leases, so, um, I would, I would like to see, I would like to see that they are treated fairly and equitably, do have a track record, and, um, I'm gonna hold you to your word on it, but, uh, I would hope that, uh, that, that's one of your top priorities now, um, forward on this.
Absolutely. Uh, that is definitely the priority moving forward.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so I do just want to, um, say a couple of things here. First of all, you know, I, Mr. Gary, I appreciate you getting back to me on the questions I had regarding the appraisal, um, and timeline, and I appreciate the questions by my colleagues here tonight. Um, I'm glad Council Mahoney brought up the point about small businesses, and subsequently, Council Palmucci and Council Falen as well. Um, you know, this is more, again, to, you know, to you, Mr. Miller, on this. Um, you know, I understand that this is going to be moving forward, if you, if and when you own the land and the parcels, you know, a discussion between you and the small business owners, but, um, I just want to reiterate here too, that, you know, I'm having a little bit of deja vu back to five years ago, when this was happening to some of the properties for the Hancock lot, right? Like, it is very frustrating when you feel as though it's, it's you up against, um, you know, folks that aren't part of the city, right? It's between a business, private business owner and a private business owner, and that's all fair and fine, and I, I understand and respect that process, but, you know, so too are you operating within the city, that you feel as though you should be able to go to members of your local government, um, for support and for help, and so, you know, I'm glad my colleagues are doing that, and I want to advocate for that as well. You know, these small businesses have been here well before, no offense, LBC was here, right, or any of these other developments were in the downtown. These small businesses have been here, um, back when, you know, we didn't need meter parking, back when folks, you know, were still going out of town, or going to the mall, um, going other places. You know, these small businesses sustained our downtown. They sustained our commercial properties. Um, they sustained the commercial tax base, you know, and they did so out of the love for the city. You know, they didn't do so because they said, okay, we're gonna have hundreds of units of residential, um, you know, built here in some odd years, so hopefully, you know, we'll stay here for some, some years, hoping that we'll get this future revenue. I mean, they stayed in the city because they believed in the city. And I think because of that, um, it is deeply, deeply important to all of us, and I would hope to you as well, um, that you are committed to respecting that, you know, to respecting the fact that they have been here, they have been committed. There's a number of colleagues of mine here on the council who own small businesses, um, who have been committed to this city, you know, who, some of them even operate in the downtown, right, have been committed to staying here before Quincy Center blew up, right, and we're looking at things like possibly having Cathay Nero come into this city, or some of these, you know, more popular like K-Katie's when they came into this city. And so, I'm super excited to see the downtown redeveloped, but, you know, this has been a longstanding concern, right? We need to make sure that it's redeveloped for those who have been here through those tough times, who were committed to staying here through those tough times, who were committed to being here and investing their businesses and their money and, and their livelihoods, you know, and banking on, frankly, just being here in a city that they care about and that they had the vision for, right? And it is really important that we carry on and respect, of all things, respect that commitment. And so, you know, again, I, I appreciate that, moving forward, it's a private conversation between two private business owners, right, LBC and these private, um, business owners, but I, I hope you can see from here tonight as well, you have, you know, a body of nine advocates, um, for those who have been in the city, residents and business owners alike, who have stuck it out, um, and frankly, you know, will make sure that they get a fair, you know, a, a fair agreement in all of this. Um, so, that's me on my soapbox. I just wanted to make sure that we remind you of that, you know, that we remind you of the commitment that these small businesses have here in this community. Um, and I would ask that you respect that moving forward. So, thank you, um, for your time, and, uh, with that, I'll reiterate that we do have a motion to approve by Council Harris, seconded by Council McCarthy. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Crowell.
Yes.
Counsel Debona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
No.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Falen. You're muted, Chuck.
Uh, yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Eight members.
Okay, item passes. All right, um, next, we're going to go to the approval of previous meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the December seventh meeting minutes, please?
So moved.
Push to approve.
Counsel Kane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Counselor Falen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes pass. Communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards. Okay, seeing none. Unfinished business and proceeding meeting. All right, seeing none. Reports of committees. Counsel Harris?
Uh, yes, um, this evening, um, there was a public hearing was held prior to this evening's, um, um, council meeting, uh, at six-thirty, and it was utility grant location, Mass Electric, um, slash Verizon at one fifty-two Oxenbridge Road. Um, before I, 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 um, say that it's a, a positive recommendation for Public Works Committee, during that, during that, that, that hearing, I, I answered, I was trying to answer questions that I didn't really have all the answers to, and, uh, moving forward, uh, I certainly would like to see the council, um, look into, uh, especially, you know, during the public works meetings, uh, uh, as the chairman, uh, look a little deeper. Uh, I, I had no idea about the fact that there was, uh, trees involved, and there were folks that were, were, uh, that, again, there was some, there was questions answered that I, asked that I couldn't answer. But, that being said, uh, I, I will make a, a motion for approval, but, uh, moving forward, uh, I would say Mass Electric should have had somebody here, uh, and Verizon should have had someone to speak, uh, or be able to, uh, answer some questions as well, so. Uh, I'll, I'll make, uh, a, a motion for approval, but this won't come easy, uh, coming forward in, in future Public Works Committee meetings, and I, I hope that that's passed along.
Thank you. All right, so, do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Counselor Falen. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Crowell.
Yes.
Counsel Debona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
No.
Counsel Falen.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you, item passes. Counsel Harris, anything else out of your committee?
That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other reports of committees? Okay, seeing none. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. Counsel Palmucci?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, do an old-school remonstrance here. Um, I wanted to just take this opportunity, I read a very, um, I don't know, I read an article in the, in the Globe this week, uh, that I was very disappointed by. Um, it was quoting the mayor of Boston, uh, in regards to the Long Island- it was quoting the mayor of Boston, uh, in regards to the Long Island Bridge, uh, decision that was made in the Superior Court recently. Um, the mayor of Boston said, quote, "This is a fight we shouldn't be having," end quote, with the city of Quincy, in reaction to something that Mr. Walker said that, um, you know, that this isn't the last of a fight, the fight's not over yet. I just, I've been struck with it all week, how much that, that statement really bothers me because of how much I bel- I believe in its truth. This isn't a fight that we should be having. Um, this isn't a fight that Bill Harris should be having to, 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 to go forward with on a daily basis on the, in, in representing his, um, his residence. He's done a tremendous job thus far. Uh, that, that article, and what, what really strikes me is because this isn't a fight we should be having, was used as if the city of Quincy, this body, this mayor and the residents of Quincy and the residents of that neighborhood in particular are against treatment beds for those who need help. We are not. Not a single one of us, not a single one of us on this body disagrees with that use. What we have a problem with is the way in which they're doing it. They could, they could start, they could start treatment tomorrow if they run, uh, a ferry service out there. They could do that tomorrow. This is a fight we shouldn't be having because this is the city of Boston trying to push on to a neighborhood in Quincy, something that they wouldn't allow to be pushed on themselves. I mean, the, the, the problems, uh, with their plan in the, in the reconstruction of the bridge are decades old. It's a problem that, that, uh, Bill Harris has fought entire time he's been on the council and fought well, and, uh, that his predecessors fought. It's about neighborhoods being respected. And, and I, I believe that Mayor Walsh is a, is a good guy. I, I, I think he fights, uh, for the right causes by and large, and from, for the short time that he represented Quincy, I, I thought he was diligent in his efforts to do so. And I'm just struck by, just by how, I don't want to, disingenuous is too strong a word, but I don't like the way that it paints all of us, every single one of us, a, a collectively and individually in the city of Quincy, as if, as if we're fighting against treatment beds, because that's not what's happening here. The mayor and Bill Harris, uh, and our attorneys are fighting against a neighborhood, uh, that was pushed around for decades by the city of Boston. When, when neighborhood concerns came up, they told us to go pound sand. It's not as if they were a great community partner and we worked so well with them. Uh, that was never the case over there for that, for those neighbors. So, I, I agree, this isn't a fight that we should be having, and the city of Boston should start running a ferry service so that people can get that much-needed treatment in mental health, uh, addiction treatment and mental health treatment started. Do it tomorrow. Run the ferry. The MBTA is closing their ferry services. They got a couple of boats you can use. So the city of Boston should run a ferry service so that this isn't a fight that we do have about rebuilding the bridge. I agree, it's a fight we shouldn't be having. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counselor Harris, for your, um, for your efforts on behalf of that neighborhood. And I, I'm proud to stand with you and I know the rest of the body is proud to stand with you, as is the mayor, and will continue to do so as long as you and, and those, um, those neighbors need us to.
Thank you, Counselor. I actually had Counselor Harrison accuse her with that. Counselor Harris, I'm going to go to you next.
My goodness, um, I, I want to, I want to, I want to, um, thank, um, and I did not know that, uh, Counselor Palmucci was going to speak to, to this subject, and I was actually going to touch base on it. Um, but, you know what, um, every, um, uh, it, it comes around this time of year and, uh, you know, um, you know, my predecessor, uh, Brian McNamie, I know that, uh, you know, we, we were never enemies, we were just political opponents, and he did a great job stopping on Moon Island, uh, a, a wind, um, a very non-attractive wind, uh, producing, uh, uh, mill that was going to provide energy, clean energy to, um, clean energy to, uh, Moon Island, which, which you have a police gun range and a fire instruction, um, fire academy that still continues to go through, um, uh, parts of Quincy and, and not only through, through the Squawam area, but the vehicles going through there from just that one small, that those two facilities, um, go through North Quincy, they go through, uh, Quincy Shore Drive, but, um, thanks to, uh, you know, Counselor Palmucci, um, uh, I've gotten emails from folks from different sections of, uh, of the city, um, even my own, uh, email at five forty-eight today from a resident of Marina Bay that basically says that they don't want their tax dollars to, to fight the bridge. Well, uh, I understand that and, um, but I do under, also understand that, um, this, this is a local, um, a local, uh, fight, but it, it really is a fight for the whole city if, and if you remember going back, we've held, we've held this up for three years, and I put something on social media just to let folks know, this is one small, one small step, um, that we are, we are able to, uh, appeal, and it's not even close to being, coming to the end of the fight, and we've take, uh, David has taken on Goliath, and we've held it off for three years, and it's going to be even more. Those are three years that should have been already, um, money that, uh, has been allocated, I guess, by the mayor of Boston to, uh, build a bridge, uh, a bridge that the plan that I saw, been there since day one, doesn't even meet the Department of Transportation's guidelines. It mirrors the old bridge, again, with all the new rules and laws. I mean, we talk about, uh, um, we, we talk about what, what we're worried about, uh, the rising of heights and the old plumbing, and, uh, the bridge that they plan on putting up would be underwater, not maybe in my lifetime, but i- in, in years to come, and it just doesn't make sense from, a, a sense at all when the, then, and, and, um, I'm personally be, being, uh, now, it's not about me, our city, our mayor, um, probably some of my, um, uh, council, um, colleagues have taken criticism that we don't care about what, what Counselor Palmucci touched on, and that's certainly not the case. I would rather be, I would rather be a friend working together with the mayor of Boston than a foe blocking, uh, blocking, helping people. And I would jump in, all in, to help find different locations for, this is, and again, I stood up and questioned the mayor of Boston on, on, on television in front of a packed house like I was in Yankee Stadium and I was a Red Sox player standing up at the plate, packed in a packed house with no Quincy, very few Quincy people there, and, and, and called the mayor out on the fact that he declared the island an economic, uh, opportunity zone. And folks don't, I don't think, have heard, had gotten this word and understand that doing that made an opportunity for that land, a huge parcel of land that's much bigger than Marina Bay, has more oceanfront than Marina Bay. You're talking about billions of dollars worth of property that can be developed, big businesses getting big tax breaks because of that. So you don't declare a, a, an area, you don't declare an area like that. And I'll tell you what, uh, an, an, an economic opportunity zone unless you have a motive. And the motive should have been about, about saving the people, not worrying about an economic opportunity zone. He did that. His own actions prove that we cannot trust it. If there was ever an island, that island developed, it would affect every single neighborhood in Quincy as far as the traffic is concerned, because between people diverting their traffic now, it would, it would affect, it would affect everybody coming over, uh, and going through, um, um, going, going, you know, through the city, and it really does. That bridge, the New Ponce Bridge is bad enough as it is. And all I can say is that I was forwarded a, uh, a social media, um, social media, uh, and if you hear the emotion in my voice, on social media, the South End Roxbury Community Partnership posted my address on a map, very, 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 um, uh, oh, vivid, and, and the location, and pointed out the location of the bridge, saying that I was doing it, um, basically saying that I was doing it for my own good. Well, that's, that's absolutely really not the case. Um, but, um, as it, as this fight has been going on, um, I'm not worried about those folks who want, want to try to scare me or frighten me. Um, you know, if we, I'm going to finish up with this quote, uh, and make it quite clear to the people who are, who are trying to, you know, trying to intimidate me. Um, I mean, I, I'm, I'm from an English heritage and this, um, I, I was watching this show and it, uh, a few weeks ago, The Crown, and I'm just going to quote a Scottish author, a poet, and Margaret Thatcher was actually using his, and she was a, 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 a very tremendous, um, leader, the first female, um, prime minister. She held the office for eleven years, and, and she's, and she quoted when she was speaking with the Queen of England, when she was worried about having enemies. And she said, "You have no enemies, you say. Alas, my friend, the boast, uh, the boast is poor. He who has mingled in the fray of duty that the brave endure must have made foes. If you have none, small is the work that you have done. You've hit no tri- if you, if you've hit no traitor on the hip, you've dashed no cup from a purgerer's lip, you've never turned the wrong to right, you've been a coward in the fight." And that was by Charles McKay. And I guess folks know where I live now, and I'm no coward. Thank you, and I'm sorry for my, um, my words. Thank you.
No, nothing to apologize for, Counselor. Thank you so much. Any other presentations of petitions, memorials and remonstrance? Counselor Debona?
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. Um, I was just thinking, you know, this is our last meeting of the year. We're going into twenty twenty-one. Um, we're trying to close out obviously twenty twenty, and, um, just over the course of the last week, going from the yellow to the red and, you know, averaging between fifty and sixty COVID cases per day, I just think back of, um, you know, we've had the COVID heroes in front of us, COVID nineteen heroes, but I just want to say, uh, just a thank you to the Quincy police officers and our Quincy firefighters for all the hard work this past year, dealing with a lot of, uh, issues, um, and also along with Bruce Ambulance, our first responders, just keeping our citizens safe. I'm just thinking about these cases going up and, um, they're on the front lines trying to help out, and, um, you know, we're going into obviously, um, Christmas and, uh, Happy Hanukkah, you know, we have a, I'm saying, having a safe new year here. So I, I just thinking back on this past year of a lot of the things that have occurred nationwide as well as, um, as, as a pandemic globally, um, but also here in Quincy, Massachusetts, and just, just to elaborate, just a, just a thank you for, for everything that you do for our city, keep our citizens safe, um, and, you know, uh, along with our, our city of, city employees as well, um, going through the COVID o- over the last, uh, since March, um, working remotely then coming back into the facilities. Um, I'm going to give a big shout out to Commissioner, uh, Grusioso, DBW with a, a potential six-to-twelve inch snowstorm coming air, our first big event unfortunately, but, uh, since the, uh, October thirty-first Halloween little thing, but, um, get, get the engines ready, get, get the trucks ready. Um, but anyways, just want to say thank you. I know this is our last meeting. Also want to thank Jen Manning, um, and our staff here, Nikki Crispo, um, Susan O'Connor, for, for all their help as well as you, um, uh, President Liang, with all the hard work this past year. Going, I just hope that twenty twenty-one, we have a better year. It's been a tough year for everybody, but, uh, just wanted to, to say thank you to our Quincy fire, uh, Quincy firefighters, Quincy police officers, our first responders, Bruce Ambulance. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other presentations of petitions, memorials or remonstrance? Okay, great. Seeing none, we'll move on. Any motions, orders and resolutions? All right, so with that, I just want to remind folks, um, Counselor Debona is right, this is the last, uh, formal city council meeting of the year. We will be reconvening in January on Monday, January eleventh, and then the second meeting will be January nineteenth, which will be a Tuesday after the holiday. Um, between now and then, obviously, we're all still accessible by email and phone, um, and, you know, Counselor Debona, you took the words right out of my mouth, but I do just want to, um, take an opportunity to actually to thank all of my colleagues, you know, every single one of you, um, have families that you need to worry about, loved ones, um, full-time jobs, you know, the constituent work that you're doing on the council as representatives of the city as well, and then essentially shifting all of that work, uh, remotely, and you guys have done it flawlessly this year. You know, we've had a couple of mute, unmute things back and forth, but looking at other cities and towns and how they've run their Zoom meetings, um, I say with pride every time I talk to anybody that my council does it right, and I think that we handle ourselves really well through this platform. You know, I think that none of us thought we'd be here at this point in time, but we are, um, and we spent the entire year doing this and don't know when the end is in sight. And so I do just want to take this opportunity, um, to thank everybody in the council office, but particularly my colleagues on the city council as well for keeping their heads high, um, and dealing with the pandemic, um, with such grace and dealing with this platform with such grace. So, uh, with that, uh, thank you to everyone. I hope everyone has an incredible holiday season, get some well-deserved, long overdue rest, disconnect from your phones if you need to, um, to take some time for yourself and your loved ones. And yeah, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn and say goodbye? Thank goodness to twenty twenty.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Good night, everyone. Peace be days. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays, everybody.